I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's, or this afternoon's, meeting of the Pender County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'm going to lead us in invocation and Commissioner Newton's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everybody please stand? Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the little bit of rain that we've gotten over the last few days. I know that it's been beneficial to the farmers and their crops. Now, as we go through today's agenda, please provide us wisdom and guidance to make the right decisions for the people of Pender County. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Address the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, we're at item four, adoption of the agenda. I know we have several items that need to be rearranged. I believe Sheriff Cutler has an item that he would like to withdraw. Sheriff?
Good afternoon. This was a grant that we applied for and it was time sensitive, so that's the reason why it's on the agenda, but we were not able to get that. We were not awarded that grant, but it was internet crimes against children, so we will be trying that again. Just wanted to let you know.
Which item was it, Sheriff?
Yes, sir. It is nine point six.
So you'd like us to withdraw nine point six because we didn't get the grant that we thought we were going to get?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that you need for today's agenda?
No, sir.
Okay.
There's something in consent agenda, but.
Okay. Appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so. Is there anything else that we need to? I believe we took care of the Health Department item, correct? Is there anything else on the agenda?
We're going to add that item for Scottsdale, are we not?
Yes. Yeah. So. We need to add an item relative to some safety improvements that are going to be done in Scottsdale by the DOT. They're going to come and, did we get a copy of that resolution?
Yeah. The resolution, it still has to be worked on, but we do have the presentation here.
Okay.
So, but I can, we can have that ready for you by Thursday night for budget hearings to sign off on, and I've already talked to DOT about that here today.
Okay. Okay. And their representative is here for the, for that portion. So we would add that under public information, or are we going to add that under section nine?
Section nine, sir.
Okay. So we'll add it at the very end. So it'll be nine point ten. And that's a DOT presentation.
Mr. Chairman, would there be any objections to adding it under special presentation so DOT folks don't have to sit through?
No, I'm, I'm fine with that. If, if, that's why I asked if we wanted to do it earlier.
Maybe do it at six point four after the presentation.
Sure. Okay. So we're going to remove nine six and we're going to add item six point four. Are there any other amendments to the, to today's agenda that we need to make? Can I get a motion? Oh, okay.
Yes. On the seven o'clock agenda, the second item, item twenty-one point two, SUP twenty-two dash twenty-nine. Over the weekend, the applicant withdrew his application for a special use permit.
What was the item again, Travis?
Item twenty-one point two. Yes, it would have been under Feldman. That's correct.
And why they withdrew their application, right?
Yes, withdrew it completely.
Okay. Can someone make a motion to adopt the agenda of these amendments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to amend the agenda by removing item twenty-one point two, removing item nine point six, and adding item six point four for the DOT presentation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It passes unanimously.
Yes, Chairman. I'll make a motion for the amended agenda passed now.
Very good. Do we have a second? All those in favor? Again, that passes. So we have a rule just for everybody that's sitting out there. In order to add an item or remove an item from our agenda, it has to be unanimous in order to proceed with that. That was a rule that was instituted several terms ago, so we just want to explain why we're, why we're doing what we're doing. All right. So at this time, we're ready for public hearings. We have no public hearings, but we do have. Do we have any signups for public hearings?
We have a public comment yesterday, Mr. Chairman. We have two.
Well, I better wait until I get to that one then. Public information, item six, six point one, Trillium. I know this was on the last agenda, I believe. Are they here today? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you for being flexible with me on the moving targets as we try to get ready for our Medicaid transformation. But again, thanks for the opportunity to share with you our annual report. I also want to thank you for allowing Wes Stewart, who is your DSS director, to serve on our regional advisory board. Very engaged and very knowledgeable and very helpful in the decision makings that we have to deal with on a daily basis. Also Janice Nichols, who serves on our regional board, but she also serves on our governing board. So we appreciate you allowing those two individuals to serve on our, our boards to represent your county. So as I did last year, I'm going to kind of give you an update on who we are, some date on who, who we are as far as numbers. Give you a quick thirty thousand view of the Medicaid transformation that I'm sure many of you are hearing about and the impact it's having on Trillium and other LME MCOs and getting ready for the Taylor Plan and some organizational changes, and then also county data that's important to each of you. So who are we? Our numbers are twenty-eight counties. The year that I'm covering, which is last fiscal year, we only had twenty-seven, twenty-six counties. But we've had two to join us since that time. One was as a result of a merger between two of the LME MCOs and one was a result of another county choosing to come with Trillium as their LME MCO. Population of almost one point five million, two hundred and forty-five thousand Medicaid eligible individuals in the twenty-eight counties, and we've served two hundred and forty-five, I mean fifty-eight thousand of those who are Medicaid who receive behavioral health, substance use, or ADD services. Seventy percent were mental health, twenty percent substance use, ten percent intellectual and developmental disabilities. Have approximately, contracts with approximately five hundred providers, and I'm not keeping up. There we go. I have to do multitask, right? It's a challenge. Our smallest county is Terrell or Tyrell County. I'm not even going to pretend which is the correct way to pronounce it. Our largest is New Hanover County. And we cover a total of twelve thousand square miles. Trillium is kind of unique in that we have three regions, northern, central, and southern, as far as how we operationalize our, our services. I serve with the Regional Director for the Southern Region. Currently, we have eight counties, and you can kind of see what those counties are. Jones, Carteret, Omslo, Hinder, Bladen, Columbus, Brunswick, New Hanover, we're our eight counties. Medicaid transformation, the standard plans. Many of you know that July first, the standard plans went into operation. There were five companies that were awarded that RFP. AmeriHealth, Caritas, Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Health, Well Care of North Carolina, and Carolina Complete Health. Now, Carolina Complete Health is not a statewide. They cover three of the six regions, three, four, and five. These plans are managing the mild to moderate behavioral health individuals. So that basically is about seventy-five percent of the individuals that we served in the previous fiscal year. So a big shift in who their insurance carrier is, basically. Again, that started July first. Taylor Plan. There were seven applications for the Taylor Plan, and the Taylor Plan, as far as the Medicaid transformation, was to serve the more severe, high-needs individuals and the intellectual and developmental disabilities populations, as well as other groups, and I'm not going to name all of them because I probably can't and I'd miss one. But the, also the state-funded individuals or uninsured or underinsured individuals would be served through the Taylor Plan. Six LME MCOs were awarded the Taylor Plans. They'll go into operation February, I mean January, December one of this year, twenty twenty-two. What happened was Cardinal was an LME MCO. They merged with Vaya. Through that process, the department, the secretary gave the counties that were members of the Cardinal LME MCO the option to go with other LME MCOs instead of merging with Vaya. I think about six of those counties chose to go with other LME MCOs. Halifax County was one of those that chose Trillium. Again, the original date for going live was July first of this year, but that was postponed. Again, it'll be December one. You'll see basically the makeup of how those Taylor Plans, what counties they'll cover, and how they'll set up. Again, six LME MCOs will be the Taylor Plans. We, we're, part of that application process was also to, to be agreed to readiness reviews. So we're, we're beginning to get, schedule those readiness reviews through the Department of Health and Human Services. They bring teams in to make sure we're in compliance with the required information that we provided in the RFP. Also, we'll be responsible for providing the supports for the physical health of those individuals. So while we currently have five hundred contracts for providers, we'll probably triple that because we'll be contracting with medical groups and primary care providers who provide services to Medicaid. We'll also be responsible for the pharmacy requirements for those individuals, so we'll be building in contracts for pharmacy providers. And we're working with one primary one at this time and should have a contract in place very shortly. Organizational changes. February of this year, Lisa Langright, who was our CEO, retired again. She had worked with the Department of Health and Human Services for many years, retired, and then after retiring, decided she wanted to come back. So she was hired by Trillium, I think it was about seven or eight years ago, but she has retired. Joy Free Trail, who has been within one of the, I guess, legacy organizations in Trillium, was the finance director, is now the CEO. So we're very pleased to have her who's familiar with the system and is familiar with the individuals that are supported throughout our twenty-eight counties now. Our legal general counsel did leave to go to Washington DC, and we rehired, or we hired Shanitra Goodman to take his place. Sue Anna Forrest was hired as our Director of Government Relations, helping us build the relationships with our legislators and trying to continue to support the increased availability of the funds for those who are underinsured or uninsured. And we've been doing some major shifts within Trillium, other departments, because of the Taylor Plan. Other changes is we have added, instead of our current call system, three call centers, pharmacy provider, and nurse. We are now responsible, or at least December one, will be responsible for a total care of each individual, and we'll have a care manager assigned to each individual who's eligible for the Taylor Plan. And we built in a disaster response unit, especially after our experiences with Florence and realizing the supports that were needed for folks who were having behavioral health challenges, as well as the intellectual and developmental disability population of getting access and getting to safe environments. Project updates. The locks on kits, unfortunately, they do exist, but they are a good tool in helping people who do have an overdose and to recover from that overdose. We were fortunate in the department gave us an additional, I think it was twelve hundred in the locks on kits that we distributed to all of our counties. So there was a total of about twenty-four hundred kits distributed to our twenty-eight counties throughout the, the previous fiscal year. Our mobile clinics, I don't know if you've seen those or not, but they're the mobile integrated care units. As you know, a lot of the twenty-eight counties that we support are very rural, and this is a tool that we identified of getting those supports out into those rural counties and setting up appointments or availability on two to three days a week, sometimes even more. So that actual unit provides some behavioral health supports and substance use supports. And it goes out into the counties and setups where folks can come in. Also available through those are telehealth options. If someone's on medication treatment, they're able to, to tap into a psychiatrist via telehealth to get that support. The tribal engagement part of the Taylor Plan is to work with the state-recognized tribes and to meet their cultural and physical and behavioral health needs. So we've developed a plan, submitted that to the department for their approval. Family navigators will now become a part of our system of care. Family navigators, basically, are people who have lived experience and will be able to help families navigate our very complicated system. So that's another great project. Coresponders, being able to place within DSS or law enforcement or DJJ, Department of Juvenile Justice, individuals who have a behavioral health background to help when there is a crisis. Again, an evidence-based model that we've seen be effective in other states. Our CFAC is adding the representation of someone who has or a family member has a traumatic brain injury. That's a change within the state, so again, increasing that access and representation of our child and family advocacy council committees. And then the healing place in New Hanover, we're hoping will open in, in September. So Pender County data, total in previous fiscal year, fiscal year, fourteen hundred and seventy-six individuals served, eleven hundred and seven, twelve, mental health, three hundred and eighty-six substance use and intellectual and developmental disabilities, two hundred and nineteen. Questions?
I see healing, what is the healing place?
That's a, it's two hundred bed substance use facility that's being built in New Hanover County that will serve all twenty-eight counties. It's based on a model out of Louisville, Kentucky. Hopefully, it'll open, I think we're thinking around October, so it's a large campus. And again, will be available to all twenty-eight counties.
Where does that aim?
It's on Medical Drive, close to the hospital.
Any other questions for Mr. Williams? Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the update.
Got it. Have a great day.
Have a good, good day and safe travels home. All right. We're going to move on to item six point two, the Town of Wallace Airport Annual Update.
How's everybody doing today?
We're doing good.
Glad you could make it.
I'm glad I made it too, and I apologize for last month. That was a, never happened before, but here we are. So anyway, I just wanted to just give our annual update. The airport, we're actually doing a lot as far as construction goes. And there's just a lot of changes going on at the airport, and I just wanted to give you guys an update and let you know what we're doing. So the airport today, a lot different than it was yesterday, and I mean that every day, the airport's changing. But the last time we updated you guys, we had roughly twenty-three airplanes based at the airport. And over the last year or two, we've, we're roughly up to about thirty-three, thirty-four right now. So there's been a lot of growth at the airport within the last twelve to eighteen months. It's kind of hard to see in the picture, but we have twelve parking spaces outside for airplanes, and right now I have none available. So, and it's been that way for, on and off for the last eight months or so. So good growth, good positive growth. Runway length is going to be a big topic today. We have a forty-one hundred foot runway, which really limits our aircraft capability, which we've, we've discussed many years in the past. And one other thing is, is just to give everybody in the room a better idea of why we're here. The airport does lie in Pender County, so Pender County and the Town of Wallace, which is who actually owns the airport, both reap some of the benefits of the airport and what, what benefits airports carry. So speaking of one of those benefits is going to be the economic impact of airports. Every two years, North Carolina DOT, NC State, and Itri do a biannual economic impact of airports. We have a relatively small impact compared to the state. We are a small airport right now, so that's, that's expected. We contribute five point two million dollars to the state economy, state and local economy. Thirty jobs and over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in taxes, state, state and local taxes. So this number is going to be interesting to track. One, we're doing a twenty twenty-one now, so that's right in the middle of COVID. It'll be interesting to see the impacts COVID had on economic impact reports. And then it'll also be interesting, as airport development continues, where this number goes long term. It's easy to, what's the word I'm looking for? The, the length of the runway and the amount of economic impact are directly correlated in a lot of instances. So it'll be interesting to track this number over the next two or three research cycles. So just a few projects that we've been working on, I'm going to go over a little smaller, and then we'll go over the big airport, overall airport expansion project. So we've been working on an AWAS project, which is Automated Weather Station, Automated Observation Weather Station or System. What this does is this allows pilots and the general public and anybody needing weather to access weather at the facility or from the site. So news organizations, anybody looking at, you know, receiving weather, you're seeing weather on the news, temperature, rainfall. It's usually coming from an airport, a weather station at an airport. So we've been working for the last two and a half to three years on pursuing one. We started this back early twenty twenty, if not sometime in twenty nineteen. And we've had to go through three basic phases, which is what you see here. We've had to acquire land. We've acquired thirty-one acres. We've had to clear the thirty-one acres, and now we're on phase three now, which is the actual install and construction of the equipment. This is a very elaborate project. We, like I said, we've worked on this three years. We've been through FCC licensing, benefit cost analysis, multiple phases of construction. So for something as simple as it is, we, we have, we've been working on this for a long time. So there's the area I was talking about. So that is a area adjacent to the airport that we had to acquire. We acquired through navigation easement, and we finished clearing in twenty twenty-one. So that part's done. We then qualified for the equipment. DOT purchased the equipment for us in this past budget, and we've got it out the bid now to install. So just to give an idea, that's, that's really what we've been working for, for three years, is that, those pieces of equipment. And that's measuring everything from visibility, ceilings, cloud ceilings, rainfall, wind direction, all kinds of weather information. And for the reason this is important for aviation and not just the general public, getting accurate weather information, this is how pilots determine weather at the airport, whether they're coming in. This weather can be accessed all across the world. So it's very important for a pilot to know where, what the clouds are, wind direction, and all that. And they can actually tune in via radio frequency and listen to what the weather is from, from, or log on to the internet and do it. So it's very, it's a very important piece of infrastructure. We done a aeronautical survey for businesses that use, have used the airport for many years, and they had two pieces of infrastructure they requested. One was a weather station, and the other one was a fifty-five hundred foot runway. So we're fulfilling this one, and hopefully we're, we're, we're also working on another one. I'll get into a minute. But this has been a very important project. I hope to have this thing up and running in August. So maybe in September, you'll see a little temperature sensor in the morning when you watch the news, a little temperature reading when you watch the news, and it'll be coming from this. So that'll, hopefully, everything keeps running smooth. Just to give you an idea of where the money come from, we receive entitlement funds, this is, this is federal entitlement money. We receive a lump of money every year. It's roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The, these funds have a ten percent local match. So that's roughly what we spent on it, and then the local match, it's not exactly ten percent in this case because through COVID and certain relief efforts the federal government's made, some of these local matches have been reduced or not, not been required. So that's why it's not a direct correlation of ten percent. But this, this project in the thirty-two thousand is, is a direct contribution from Pender County. That is, that is something we've been able to do thanks to your guys' contribution. Our methodology on that is your contribution covers five percent of the ten percent, so half of the local match, and then the Town of Wallace is the other half of the local match. And that allows us to really progress forward faster with some of these projects like this. The other big project we've got going on, this is, this is really the big bulk of, we've been talking about this for years, is the airport expansion project. This project is, overall, the intent is to get our runway from forty-one hundred feet to fifty-five hundred feet. And what that enables us to do is, is allows us to facilitate corporate jet aircraft and larger aircraft that bring more money to our local economy. It's, it's very impactful. The larger the jet, they're coming in to see business or conduct business, they're simply bringing more money. That's, that's just the best way to put it. So this project is funded through STI, so NC DOT is funding this project, and we have started on it. We have done phase one land acquisitions and preliminary road design now. I can actually kind of show you a little calendar. So we started, well, I guess it's a timeline. But we started phase one land acquisitions in January of twenty twenty-one. We, we got to go ahead and start the project. Every time I've ever talked to you guys in the last five years about this project, we've been talking about starting the project. But we have actually started the project and we are drawing money. So we have spent roughly a million dollars at this point on this project, which is major progress. So phase one land acquisitions run concurrent with preliminary road design, and the reason for that is is phase two land acquisitions were relying on road, road alignment. So the ones that are, have I got a laser pointer? I do. So these properties on this side of the road, there was five, four residential properties. We could have bought those. We needed those regardless of where the road was going. So we went ahead, and they were residential properties, so they took a little longer, a little more delicate process. We went ahead and purchased those while we were getting the road alignment approved. We just finished purchasing the last one about two, maybe four weeks ago now. So that is, we, we acquired four residential properties and one vacant lot in phase one land acquisitions. And we were able to do so, we displaced three families or two families, no, it was three families. We displaced three families on that, but we were able to negotiate, and everybody was satisfied with the results. So we had, actually, quite frankly, they were all, they're all very satisfied and happy with how things went out. They're in nicer homes, so it worked out very well, and I hope to continue that trend through the rest of our land acquisition process. So, so far, we've done, we've had very happy people around us, and I, like I said, I hope to keep that going. So with the road alignment, getting the preliminary approval of the road alignment, uh-oh, I hit, I hit the home button. There we go. There we go. There we go. So, so phase two land acquisition and preliminary design, we couldn't start phase two until the preliminary design was complete. the preliminary design was complete. Um, we finished preliminary design in November. We have started phase two land acquisition. So, that's all the big chunks of property that are only, that are along the road alignment. Those have started. We are in the surveying process now on envi- environmental work and the appraisals. And we've also started on official, actual roadway design. We've been doing that.
So, that works, you're working with DOT during that, correct?
Yes, well, yeah, for the most part. I already, I mean, this is, it's a kind of a complicated blend. Our engineering firm is working through Division of Aviation, which it's a highway project, so it's a little blend.
Yeah, but it's, it's.
It's all concurrent with the.
Yeah, it comes out of the Secretary of Transportation, right?
For, for the most part, absolutely. So, um, and so, so we should be done with, the idea is, the point I'm trying to get to is, we should be done buying all land and finish designing the road by the end of this calendar year, which if, and that's assuming STIP doesn't fall apart. That's a very volatile funding source right now, but we had, do have a grant for this project, so it is a little more secure. Assuming STIP doesn't fall apart.
What does STIP stand for?
So, STIP is, uh.
Strategic Transportation Investment Plan.
So, that, that's where this project's funded. It's a hundred percent, um, funded, so no local match for this project. Um, and it's going through, we, we should be ready to bid it out sometime next calendar year. Um, I'm hoping sometime this time, so twelve months from now, really hopefully bidding the, the road construction of this out if everything goes smooth. So, that's very exciting progress to be made. After we fit, finish the road, get the road moved, then we can start extending the runway, which will probably be the following calendar year. So, that's a very, very exciting project. We've been, it's, it's estimated value's around fifteen million. Um, and again, that's no local match. So, that is a, that's a great project, and that's gonna be a great asset for Pender County that, that from a local dollar, local government standpoint, is, is, is not costing us money out of our budget directly. So, that's very exciting.
She'll have a contract with Calhoun, right, to do an engineering for you?
We do. We just renewed it. Um, we just got town council to approve our renewal for another five years.
So, that's the answer, gonna be a lot for the airport. I mean, a lot of people don't have a license in Pender County, but, uh, it's gonna be a lot for the airport.
It is. It'll be very great to see the, the larger traffic it generates, and again, that economic impact. So, we've all, from a taxpayer standpoint, we've got to see the benefit of airports, not just what it is. And that economic impact number is the, is the benefit, and it'll be interesting to track that. It's, it's, it's a good number considering what we put into the airport, but it'll be interesting to continue to track the growth of that number as the airport grows. Real quick, I, I'm, I'm trying not to take a whole lot of your time. I could talk about the airport forever. So, um, the, a few projects we have in the pipeline, we have an apron expansion project, which if you go back, this little orange thing here is another project funded in STIP, assuming we can keep that project funded. Like I said, STIP is in a unique situation right now, so I'm not a hundred percent sure of the status of that project. But right now, that's also funded at five million dollars, um, no local match. So, that is gonna allow us to, more parking space, it's gonna allow us to start building hangars and start facilitating these larger aircraft. It's kind of, needs, it's gonna, everything goes planned, running concurrent with the expansion. So, that's a very important project funded. These two bold projects you see here are two projects that we are partially, we've designed part, we've, so if you look up runway rehab design right here, we, that has been funded through the Division of Aviation, that is to repave our runway. And then this other project is gonna be a parallel taxiway. So, that's the thing that is parallel to the runway that's running through here. Um, safety improvement, major improvement for the airport. Um, we expect those two projects, the parallel taxiway and the runway pavement rehabilitation project, we expect, that's valued at five point three million dollars. We expect that project to be funded within the next three years. And the reason I say that, one, Division of Aviation funded the design for the runway rehab, which means they're, they're really considering funding that. They really support the project. And the other aspect of it is, is the FAA is also considering funding it. We didn't quite meet the competition side, we just didn't quite meet a few things, so we're hoping to get it this upcoming year. But nonetheless, regardless of who's gonna fund it, I have strong reason to believe that we, we should be moving forward with that project within the next couple of years. That project's gonna carry ten percent match unless something changes dramatically in how things are funded. So, um, that's gonna be a total match of around five point, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, um, going on to Pender County's contribution, we do carry a fund balance with what you guys give us every year. Um, and the reason we do that is because we, we have foreseen for several years these larger projects coming down the road. And so, we've been requesting fifty thousand dollars a year and, quite frankly, using, well, we have a hundred and ninety thousand available. We've, we've requested, since I've been working, two hundred and fifty, and we have a hundred and ninety. So, um, we've been foreseeing projects like this coming, and, um, and I have their five percent local match is two sixty-five, so five percent Pender County funds and a five percent Town of Wallace funds. The idea, it's just a trend we've been following. So, I expect that project to be funded, um, and, well, it's, uh, we, I didn't do the full two, two sixty-five, because I honestly don't know when it's gonna be funded, but we do know it's coming. And, uh, well, let me rephrase that. I have a strong reason to believe it's coming. So, um, just based off support and design support we've been getting from Division of Aviation. So, um, that's where your request is going. That is a, that's where the money you've been giving us is at. That's a rough number. That number's constantly changing as we move forward with the project. But, uh, um, we appreciate you guys' support. Um, without you guys, we wouldn't be able to move forward at the rate we're going. We, we are able to move forward faster with, with multiple governments supporting the airport. It has allowed us to develop the airport faster than it normally would. Now, it's really appreciated, and like I said, it, I ain't gonna say it'd be impossible, but it would be a lot more difficult, I'll put it that way.
So, so two suggestions I have, um, you're all right that the STIP is in a very volatile situation. DOT funding and the Department of Transportation, um, budget is, is, um, is experiencing a lot of, uh, issues at this time. Um, there's a, it's based on, um, the gas tax to a large degree, um, and of course, with the amount of electric cars and people not driving as much because gas prices are going up, uh, the revenues aren't what they were forecast to be. So, that equates to some volatility in the, in the plans that were for, put forth, and therefore in the budgets that are allocated. I would strongly recommend that you, um, stay in touch with not only us, uh, but also the County Commissioner from Duplin County, um, the RPO representatives that are actually engaged in and should be helping you drive this, this project, um, through the STIP process, um, so that, uh, and your state legislatures, that, um, your representatives in the state legislature, um, from Duplin County, Pender County, and, uh, you know, the state senators.
Absolutely.
All those, all those individuals need to understand the importance of this, understand the status, and understand what is being asked for, so that they, uh, can provide the proper level of support. Okay?
Absolutely. And I do, I am in contact with the majority of those. Patrick Flanagan and me talk regularly at the Cape Perro P.O. So, um, the little bit I do know about STIP is because of him. So, it's, uh, but yeah, absolutely, I agree a hundred percent, and I appreciate that.
And then the Cape Perro P.O.'s a big supporter of that airport.
Yep, they are, they are. Absolutely. So, um, both of these projects are programmed for twenty-twenty-four, and I, I, if there's a DOT person in the room might could help me understand that a little better, but maybe that means we're good. I don't know. There's been a lot of discussion on it, so we'll see. But, uh, we did, one last tidbit I want to throw in there is, uh, we did receive seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in bill funds that is kind of used almost at our discretion. So, I have no idea what we're gonna spend that on or what we can spend it on right now, but hopefully the next report I give you will have a, a good idea of a spend plan. My idea is to start building things that generate revenue, so hangars and fuel farm updates and stuff like that. So, but I can't give you a whole lot on that, but it is exciting to know that we have eight hundred thousand dollars to spend, hopefully as we please, as long as it's a reasonable capital improvement. So, but other than that, that's all I got. If, uh, if you have any questions, I can talk all day about it.
Well, we appreciate you coming.
Absolutely.
Appreciate the update.
Absolutely. Thank you for letting me come. Y'all have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. King.
You got a comment, Commissioner Williams? All right, we're ready for item six point three, uh, presentation of the proposed twenty-twenty-two school bond. Is Dr. Hill here?
Dr. Hill's not here. They dropped this resolution off this morning, um, and I can read it if you would like into the record, um, which outlines the Board of Education's request, as well as the itemized breakdown of what the bond proceeds would cover.
I guess if there's no member of the school board here.
Okay. Um, Jim, the Board of Education approved this resolution, um, May tenth.
Can I interrupt you just a second? This is pretty important. I would have imagined that, and I support the school board.
I understand, I understand. I'm just, I'm disappointed from the.
Be here to share this and explain anything, any questions we might have about it.
I understand. Uh, I'm disappointed myself, so, but, um, I believe from the timeline that we've discussed, um, this is necessary for us to, to, to get this in front of the public. Um, I, I am disappointed that the school is not here to present it. I, I.
My point is, my point is, not meaning to interrupt you, but this belongs to the school board. This is something they're going to ask for. Yeah, and this is not a commissioner, commissioner-driven project.
And it's not the manager's request either.
I understand.
Well, how mu- what kind of, is there any way that they can be present at a future, next meeting that they can actually do this, or are they that close on the timeline?
We, we work with Bob Jessup and Ted Cole in developing a timeline, and there's not.
Much leeway in here. And they, and they were part of it too. So, they, again, um, I thought they would have somebody here today, um, to present this.
Cause we, the, the, the sticking point is that we have to start conversations with the LGC now.
Right.
And, uh, in Ju- June sixth, the board would need to adopt a preliminary resolution, reimbursement resolution for not to exceed bond amount.
That's right.
Okay, I'm, as one, I'm okay with moving forward to meet the timelines, but this is important enough, they need to be here to make some kind of presentation to us.
I, I understand and recognize, yeah, I, as, as you are, I'm very disappointed, but I'm just saying that we've included them in the timeline discussions, they understand the process. This isn't something that, um, there, there's some set milestones that have to occur.
And, and I think they need to be here in a public way to relay that to the citizens. At least, we take care of this piece of business today. They need to follow up with a visit to share this with the public, what they're doing here.
Okay, I understand.
Okay. It's just one.
So, Commissioner Williams, did you have a, a point? A statement?
I've been through all the other school bonds since, uh, well, the other two, two thousand five, and then the second one, and, uh, I've never heard of this point happening without somebody from the school board or staff being here. It's their project request.
It is their project request. You're correct.
Well played, is all I can say.
We've been down the road before, haven't we?
Well, just tomorrow, it'll say that the commissioner's requested a school bond, but not the school board. And that's his request in the school.
Yeah.
Make sure we're perfectly clear with that.
Yeah, I, I, I thought that, I made the assumption Dr. Hill was gonna be here, because it was on the agenda as him being the presenter. So, um, just for the public, so that everybody understands, there's been discussions, um, preliminary discussions, we're in budgetary discussions right now, and as part of that, uh, we, we became aware that the school was gonna ask for a bond referendum to be placed, um, on the ballot in November, um, and this is part of that. So, that, that is a, a pretty lengthy process that has many steps that have to be done in, in a certain order and sequence in order to, um, get everything in place, so that depending on how the election result goes, um, if the citizens vote for approval of the school bond, or if they decline it, um, if they vote for approval, we have a lot of work to do. And, um, um, part of that is selling bonds. So, we've been in contact with our legal representatives and, and the people that help us from a financial standpoint and, and, um, and figuring out the best way to fund this. Um, so, um, at this point, I'll ask Chad, our county manager, to go ahead and read, um, this presentation of proposed twenty-twenty-two school bond. Um, and again, this, to Commissioner William and Commissioner Brown's point, this is coming from the Board of Education.
Okay, uh, this resolution was approved by the Board of Education on May tenth, twenty-twenty-two, entitled, Pender County Board of Education Resolution Requesting County to Issue General Obligation Bonds. Whereas, Pender County Schools is one of the fastest-growing school districts in the state of North Carolina, currently serving in excess of ten thousand students. Whereas, Pender County is obligated to provide adequate school facilities for residents by providing funding for constructing new, expanding, or renovating various school buildings and facilities in Pender County. Whereas, the Pender County Board of Education is of the opinion that existing school facilities in Pender County are not adequate for the maintenance of public schools in the county for the term prescribed by law. Whereas, the Pender County Board of Education has currently identified the most immediate needs in Pender County as addressed in this resolution. Whereas, it is necessary to complete the projects attached heretofore and entitled twenty-twenty-two Construction Bond Request. Whereas, the estimated cost of these projects is a hundred and seventy-seven million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Say that again. How much was the cost?
Hundred and seventy-seven million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Whereas, a bond referendum is an appropriate manner in which to fund these projects, and whereas, the Pender County Board of Education wishes to work together with the Pender County Board of Commissioners to present a bond referendum to the public, which will address these critical capital needs. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Pender County Board of Education resolves to request the Pender County Board of County Commissioners to place a bond referendum on the November twenty-twenty-two general election ballot, which includes the projects identified in the attached twenty-twenty-two Construction Bond Request for Pender County Schools for a hundred and seventy-seven million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, adopted by the Pender County Board of Education this, the tenth day of May twenty-twenty-two. Itemized breakdown below, signed by Vice Chair Beth Burns, um, and, item one, new twelve-hundred student six-eight middle school, estimated price of sixty-seven million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. New eight-hundred student K-five elementary school, estimated price forty-three million, nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Topsail Middle School renovation, twenty-two million, six hundred and one, four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Rocky Point Elementary School addition, one million, two hundred and nineteen, sixty-five dollars. Burgal Middle School building rebuild cafeteria, four point two, seven two million dollars. Central Services Building and Maintenance, twenty-one million dollars. Eight-bay maintenance building, seventeen million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars, for a grand total, again, of one hundred and seventy-seven million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, eight, eight, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Mr. Manager, if I remember correctly, one thing that was talked about, we're discussing with them multiple times, and they gave them the budget for original budget, uh, retreat, whatever you wanna call it, for workshop we had over there, was that when they mentioned the, the Topsail Middle School, that's actually making, I forget what the official term is, but bringing the ninth graders over to that, you're expanding the middle school, making it bigger, and by doing that, you're freeing up all the ninth grade space at the high school.
Correct. The Topsail Middle School renovation is to allow overflow at the current Topsail High to utilize the middle school. Correct. It would be, it would be either nine or nine-ten, depending on how the numbers.
I don't know if it was an official term by.
Correct.
So, um, I think I'd asked this question before, but if I, if, if you don't have this information, I'd like for us to accumulate this and, and provide it to the public. If this is approved in November, as voted on by the citizens of Pender County, if, if this request is approved, how much, what, what's the effect on our tax rate?
We've done that analysis with, with, um, Davenport. I don't know, cause originally, originally the ask was two sixty. This is a, obviously, a much smaller number of one seventy-seven, still a substantial number. Um, there were several scenarios that Davenport, um, provided to us depending on when we took the debt. Um, but I can provide that.
Yeah.
I remember it being pretty, pretty, pretty lengthy, but over the course of the summer and fall, there'll have to be public hearings and presentations and the, and the citizens are gonna be able to see exactly what you're talking about.
Right.
Like for, for instance, day one, you know, you can't issue, you can't build all that and issue all that debt at once.
Right, right.
So, as long as it's, it's worded in such that whoever's on that board, if it is passed, you can graduate the increases.
Sure.
Over time, but you need to make sure that another board coming behind, you can't change a couple of members and not put on a planned increase, cause if you say you're gonna put three cent here and three cent there and you skip a year, then all the whole rest of the county suffers.
Yeah, and we, and we have gone through that financial analysis and there were some numbers presented to us.
Yeah.
I just wanna, uh, now that we've arrived at a, at a, at a request number, I wanna know from our financial analysts what that, what that's gonna look like in terms of increased tax rate. Okay, and what the terms are of that. Uh, and, and one other thing I wanna say about this. This is just to build the capital assets. This doesn't cover the increase in teachers, the increase in, in maintenance staff, the increase in SROs. This doesn't, this number, a hundred and seventy-seven, a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars does not increase or, or include the increase that will be required from, from an operations standpoint. Or from a maintenance standpoint. Or from an energy standpoint. Says there, there's quite a bit of additional costs when you build two new schools. There's gonna be quite a bit of additional costs that's gonna be incurred and paid for by the tax. I'm just trying to paint the picture as fair as I possibly can.
Yeah, I think last time, the whole picture wasn't in the picture, going out, what are you gonna call it? The tax rate and everything. A lot of people got surprised and said, I voted for that, yeah, but if you vote with bond issue, you know the taxes, so much of that paper will come out of the sky somewhere.
Alrighty. Um, well, I guess that concludes that item, so, um, thank you Chad for standing in for the Board of Education and fulfilling that step, that critical step. Um, we're gonna move on to item seven, public comment, um, we got. Oh, we gotta do six point four. Yep. Okay, so, uh, DOT presentation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, hi everybody, um, for those of you that do not know me, I'm Jesse Leonard.
Can you pull that mic closer so that everybody can hear you?
Yep, is this better?
I think so.
Okay, alright, so for those of you that do not know me, I'm Jesse Leonard, I'm the Division Traffic Engineer for the local DOT Division Three Office. Um, so I'm here to talk to you today about the corridor US seventeen in the area of the Scottsville Super Street, or what is now referred to as Reduced Conflict Intersections, or RCIs. Um, about two years ago, we started to get numerous TIA's in this area, which that is TIA's are Traffic Impact Analysis for developments, new proposed developments in the area. Um, they come forward and let you know their expected trips and we identify needed improvements for, um, those in the area. So we knew that all of these trips were coming to seventeen and that seventeen in this area was already experiencing some operational issues, so, um, we dug into it a little further and I'm gonna share some information on the existing conditions, on what's going on, the future outlook, and then what we've, what we've got for some proposed solutions, so, um, okay. So, uh, currently, the issues, um, observed along US seventeen are typically the worst during the AM peak hour and they're usually exacerbated by the, um, arrival times or the turnover times of the school and the church in that area. Um, and the intersections with the biggest impacts are Sidbury Road and the southern intersection of Scottsville Loop Road. Um, you can see the base map here, it has some red and orange that, um, that indicates like a normal typical travel day, um, in the AM peak hour, so, uh, I did pull that, um, from.
So that school is a charter school or a private school?
It's a charter school, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yes. Um, so, we are continually reviewing the signal timing along this corridor. Um, unfortunately, we've gotten to the point where we've done about all that we can, um, to assist US seventeen, since we do have a lot of development coming onto the corridor from the side streets, utilizing the U-turns and the left turn lanes. Um, there's only so much time we can hold them before they start to back up, back out into the through movement, causing safety concerns in that respect too. Um, you guys can still hear me okay, right?
Yeah, you might wanna speak up just a little bit.
Just a little, I'll try.
We wanna make sure that everybody can hear you.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so, um, as noted, in recent years, we've gotten, um, multiple TIA's. Um, these are indicated on this map by the red circles with, uh, the houses. Um, from just these that we've received to date, um, the trip generation, so that's the expected trips from these, are over fifty thousand a day, um, which is expected to heavily impact US seventeen. Um, the growth has of course been expected, which is why the Hampstead Bypass has been such a critical project in this area. Um, but even with this project, with the growth and the developments affecting the side streets and those U-turns, um, that, that still must be addressed, um, as well, along seventeen. So, um, since there, the concerning conditions are existing, um, and we're already experiencing those issues, a lot of the times it can be hard to identify improvements to the level that are needed to address the issues without exceeding, um, without exceeding excessive for like an individual development to put that on them. Additionally, um, NCDOT, NCDOT cannot force a development to, um, do a requirement that requires additional right-of-way. Um, so, uh, to try and get ahead of these impacts, we reached out to our statewide congestion management unit. They specialize in reviewing traffic analysis, um, not only for developments, but also for the larger STIP projects, um, that we have. Uh, so, um, they helped us to develop a plan, um, a baseline plan so that we could create an estimate and start to pursue funding. Um, so, on this slide and the next, um, I've got pictures of the, uh, preliminary plan, but I did just wanna note that it is still preliminary because we are, it's not, it's not fully funded. Um, so it's still in the planning stages. Generally, this plan includes, um, removing the direct lifts onto Sidbury in the south, southern intersection of Scottsville Loop Road and redirecting those trips to U-turn locations. Um, it also includes dual rights off of those side streets. So this, this slide shows the area of Scottsville Loop Road and this one is Sidbury. Um, we know that this still being in the beginning stages can make it difficult to coordinate, um, with the timelines and the requirements for the developments moving into this area, but we felt like it was important to, um, for us to take it upon ourselves to make sure we get the best outcome. We are certainly still gonna, uh, work with developers on the timing and possible contributions. So, um, just to let you know where this project developed from, uh, we have a lot of needs-based projects throughout our division, um, similar to this. Um, that can be developed based on observations by staff or from concerns we receive from citizens, such as if we get a concern about an intersection, we'll pull data like crashes and counts to determine if additional items need to be pursued to try and address those. Um, once we have those identified, um, if we do identify proposed solutions, we maintain a list, um, and, and prepare estimates and we try to get funding for those. A lot of those end up being funded through operational funds, which are, um, some of, most, all of those are listed here. Um, and those, these funds are, um, totally separate from the tenure STIP, so, um, they do not eliminate any of the project needs that are identified by the, um, RPOs and MPOs through that process.
So it won't have a negative impact on the Hampstead Bypass?
No, no, we wouldn't want that either. Um, so, uh, and we usually try to assign funding whenever we get the opportunity based on needs or if, for instance, somebody comes forward and says, we have this much in small construction, we look at our project list and determine what projects fall into that.
So this one's gonna fall into high-impact, low-cost, correct?
Uh, uh, yes, that, that, that is the funding that works.
And that's typically because this is gonna have a safety impact, but it's also, um, gonna change the traffic flow pretty substantially with very little investment, right?
Yeah, well, so it, I'm not positive that I understand your question.
I'm just saying that the reason it falls into that bucket is it's gonna, you're gonna see the results of that very quickly if this is done, if this is funded.
Yes.
For, for minimum amount of dollars, you're gonna see a visible, significant impact in, in, in improvement in safety.
Yes, that is a good overview of the high-impact, low-cost, yes. Um, and those, uh, that, that is correct. Um, and, and it is as much a mobility project as it is safety in this case. Um, RCIs or super streets are, um, a safe installation. Uh, we, we don't, we don't typically see high-level injury crashes along those corridors. Um, so it's already got a safe layout, it's just, um, along with the additional, additional traffic coming there.
Well, this is a legacy layout and, and, um, I believe that the church hires off-duty sheriff's deputies to, um, help manage traffic on, on, uh, during their, their heavily attended Sunday services. Um, but there's also a lot of people early in the morning and late in the evening that are trying to go to work or transport their kids to schools or other, that are coming out of those neighborhoods. And, um, so that is a heavily congested area. And this is, this is something that can be done, um, with some, um, operational funds, like you say, um, to help address the issues that we, we know exist today.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and, and of these lists, it's not, um, that we can't be sure that they, that we'll be able to identify funding for all of these items on the list, so we don't typically bring them forward until we have funding identified to make sure that when we do get funding, the project is, the project that we've proposed is still viable and a good, the best option.
Right, so one last comment. Would there be public, um, would there be any other public meetings held after the design is, you know, past the conceptual state and, um, where the public can go and see and, and provide comments back to the DOT, is that part of the process?
Yes, so this is gonna be overseen by our design unit or project development unit, so they will follow their process in, in that respect. So once they get, once they get to, I think twenty-five percent is when they have those public meetings.
Great, cause, um, we certainly don't wanna put something in place that the public's not fully, um, understanding or behind.
Yes.
In support, we wanna make sure that their comments are considered and addressed, um, prior to this being implemented.
Yep, and again, just so everybody's aware, the, um, the plans that were, were shown are not, not finalized by any means. And, and I know project development is still working with congestion management to, to finalize those or try and get the best, best option moved forward. So, um, obviously, we don't wanna implement any project that our local governments are not in support of, but specifically in our division, any project that is over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we bring forward.
And this one's gonna be probably one point six?
One point six is what, it, it, that will not cover all of it, but, um, a, a good, good portion of it. So, um, uh, we bring those forward to, uh, make sure you're under, under, you're aware of them, understand what we're proposing and, um, that you are in support of those. And we, we do ask for, um, documented approval in the form of a resolution, which is why I'm here today.
You guys have provided a resolution and I believe we're gonna, uh, are we gonna work on that and?
We're waiting on the draft language, correct, Jesse?
I think so, yes.
Tara's actually working on it as we speak.
Well, I mean, I, I'm, I'm good with approving a resolution based on the, you know, final wordsmithing by the chairman.
Well, we, luckily, we have a budgetary meeting, uh.
Thursday.
Thursday, so we can, we can, um, read that amended resolution at that meeting and take care of it during that, that item. I believe that's okay.
Um, it would probably be best to continue, at the end of this meeting, to continue it until Thursday.
Okay.
Cause we, we would not have time to, unless we went through the emergency advertising. But we could just continue it, because if we know it's a date and time certain, we can continue the meeting, uh, just like, if we take a break. It's no different technically.
Alright, what kind of timeline would you look at for this? The timeline on?
On the prod, like total project completion?
On all of it.
I, I don't have that information, but I can get that for you guys. Um, I would have to work with our project development on getting that information.
Jesse, we appreciate you coming.
Yeah, no problem, Chad did also want me to, uh, let you guys know that he would be in touch cause he wanted to come back and just give general updates and introduce more of the team.
Great, Ms., Commissioner Newton has a, has a.
Yes.
Question?
Actually, a comment. Um, Ms. Leonard, Commissioner McCoy and myself have brought up the subject several times of the, uh, danger of the intersection at Maupassas Corner and US four twenty-one or NC four twenty-one. Um, so I submit that that might be another low-cost, high-impact, um.
Yeah.
Revision that, that could be done from operational funds. If, if nothing else, just a stoplight, I think would take care of our concerns. Um, but there seems to be an inordinate amount of accidents at that intersection and it is right there at a school.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
Yeah, um, actually, I remember talking to Mr. McCoy back whenever I was Pender County Maintenance Engineer and, um, so that one's been on, uh, my list as well. Um, our regional traffic unit oversees safety funding, um, and they, safety, safety funds are allocated based on a benefit-to-cost ratio of crashes versus the cost. And that one, um, we actually just got funded some flashers, um, for that location. Um, but they are also working to get an estimate for a roundabout.
Does that have speed, um, the speed rumble things?
No, um, it, it'll be actuated flashers so that when somebody's driving up on the stop sign, it'll, it'll flash, um, the stop ahead sign.
Yeah, I know the, um, two-ten has rumble strips.
Two-ten and four-twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um, that might have been discussed. Yeah.
Is it possible to get either rubble strips or those flashers that has been approved installed prior to any additional, um, revisions such as a roundabout or a reconfiguration of the roadway? Because really something needs to be told.
Yes, the flashers have already been funded, so we've got that, we have to, um, get, the, the funding has not been allocated to the WBS's for us to charge to, but as soon as they are, we're going to get the signal plans for that. Um, and then, and then we, or my unit will be able to install those, um, while everything else is going on in the background. Rumble strips we discussed, but we've gotten a lot of complaints about the noise from those and with the nearby school, we had concerns about, um, about that.
So, do you have any ideas to how long it would take to implement the, um, flashers already approved?
Um, I, I believe it's gonna be, the funding is gonna be on next month, um, next month's agenda for the Board of Transportation, so I would say by the end of, uh, June, we'll have the funding available. It takes three months to get the signal plan searched. And then, um, I would say by middle of twenty twenty-three, um, we would be able to have that installed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else from the commissioner? Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good day, safe travels. Alright, we're finally at public comment, I've tried to get there several times, so. Um, item seven, public comment, Trey?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, um, Darren Wooton? Oh, that was Warren Wooton, not, not Darren, but, uh, I have a few comments and questions, more questions probably for the, uh, for the board and the members of the board. Uh, I'm a member of the Maple Hill Fire Department, been out there for fifty-three years. Filled probably eight to ten years with the, uh, rescue squad in Pender County. So I've been watching stuff going on for a long time. I'm not much of a speaker and I don't like doing it, but I feel like it's necessary. I'm not much of a speaker, and I don't like doing it, but I feel like it's necessary. And, uh, been watching stuff for the last few years. And, uh, with going on with the fire departments in the, in the county and the, the money that's being spent. And, uh, uh, well, I'll just go back for, for a little bit. On, uh, two thousand nineteen, the board had a meeting at one of their, their meetings, and this was on their agenda, and they were to discuss the Pender EMS and Fire, set up committees to study it, uh, set up a board with, uh, let me see, who was on the board? Uh, the fire, fire, the president of the Fire Commission, uh, Pender County EMS and Fire Chief, two commissioners, Pender County Emergency Manager Director and facilitator. And the two members were Mr. Williams and Ms. Newton, were gonna be on the board. And I was just wondering if that board ever happened and what, uh, what the results were from that. Uh, cuz they were studying, you know, the expenditure, the money that's being spent, and obviously, even back that far back. There, there were questions, so, like, I mean, did y'all form a committee? And, and did you come up with, with results and recommendations for it? Oh, at the sa- same time, when you, when this was in a, I want to make a note too that, that no volunteer departments were asked to be on that study. You know, I don't, I don't know why, but seems like the volunteer departments are left out of a lot of stuff. So, it, was that, y'all remember? That's a long time ago, two nineteen, three years ago.
In, in the meetings that I was involved with, volunteer fire departments were there. And in the interim, since you, the date, twenty-nineteen, that you initially discussed, we have retained experts to do an overview of the county EMS and Fire. Um, that study has been, uh, pretty, completed for about, uh, what, about eight, ten months?
Pretty, a pretty good while.
So, um.
But that's, but also COVID kinda slowed that down a little bit.
As it did, all things.
Slow down everything, but they presented that to y'all last August.
Yes, so there have been discussions and that is an ongoing process. And, um, we've had some other issues that have arisen that has further, uh, complicated and, and made those issues a little bit more pertinent. So, you know, they're so entangled, the issues that we're dealing with, that it's really hard to go straight at any one thing. It's, it's a lot to consider, and it involves some very basic processes of how we're doing business.
Oh, add to that, I won't be argumentative with you, but I think we got a pretty good relationship with all the volunteer fire departments.
Yeah, I, 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 I probably do, yes, I agree with that. But, but still, I mean, some of these committees and stuff could be informed, I just don't feel.
But, sir, we want to make sure that we go forward in a very thoughtful, uh, manner, that we do absolutely the right thing for the citizens of Pender County. And, uh, this is gonna be some very important decisions. And, and to my mind, the volunteers, to echo, uh, Commissioner Williams, the volunteers have been very instrumental in some of the decisions that will need to be made and have been included in that process.
Okay.
To, to my mind.
Chairman, I don't know how you wanna proceed, where, and I know there's been some commissioners responding, but we're over four minutes and we have a very heavy agenda.
Yeah, um, so typically, we, we allot, we allot just a certain amount of time. Um, we recognize that the commissioners have responded, which is another thing that we typically don't do is we respond to public comment while it's going on. So you can proceed with, um, your other comments, um, but we're gonna, we're, we're, we'll give you two more minutes in order to.
Okay, well, well, one, one of them to, uh, added that survey, which I have here, uh, page three of that survey, blended of, uh, restricted dollars is not well-aligned with legal interpretation. So I don't know what that means. What I do know is that the county, uh, they are using EMS dollars to pay for EMS truck, fire trucks and stuff like that. Uh, I know that y'all have spent a lot of money on fire trucks, paying six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a piece for them. You can buy fire trucks a whole lot cheaper than that, and two of y'all are on the board. Maple Hill just paid the down payment last week on one for about four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. With that extra money that y'all are paying for trucks, you could have bought another ambulance. And y'all have already heard there outside of that. By the way, I'm not associated with them. But, uh, but it's other things. Uh, also, being the board of directors of the Pender, uh, Maple Hill Fire Department, which I resigned a few years back, couple of years back, because they were so determined to buy a six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar fire truck, and Maple Hill can't afford it. So finally, I resigned. I said, um, y'all can explain to the people of Maple Hill why you're spending six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. But, so eventually, they didn't do that. They, they gotta find a good truck, a Pierce truck, it's a real good truck. And, uh, but i- at the same time, our department has always been told that we couldn't spend, our debt could not be over twenty-five percent of, uh, of our income. Is that a true statement, Mr. Lawyer?
Chairman, you may answer.
But anyhow, anyhow.
Typically, we do not respond to public comment.
But that's what we have always gone by, twenty-five percent. And somehow, Willie Sullivan has talked, go in to buy a six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar truck, four, uh, F-three-fifty four-wheel-drive pickup trucks to drive up and down the road. Uh, you might have a few trailers, a couple, I know you've got a couple of trailers to do, to do. But y'all can do a whole lot better, and, and you are on the board of directors, have been. I know you've got a huge slate now for board of directors, and, and Eric's been, you know, he's been, he's been.
Mr. Wooton, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to.
Okay.
Call time on you, but.
I'm, I'm retired, I'll be glad to come back.
Or, or you can, or you can reach out.
Is that a promise or a threat?
Or you can reach out.
No, I'm not doing.
Or you can reach out to us, um, individually, we all are. Emails are on the, on the webpage, and you can, yeah, we can have discussions or you can call us individually. Um, so there's other ways to get to us, um, so appreciate your comments, thank you. Who's the next individual?
Uh, Stephen Yopp.
Okay. Pretty good?
Uh, Oakley, I'm loud enough without the microphone.
Yeah, again, we're gonna limit your time to, uh, we typically do three minutes, I'm gonna give you four.
That's fine, I shouldn't need that much.
Okay.
Uh, I'm a little preemptive, I'm up here for nine point six, seven, uh, about Pender pay raise. I, uh, I'd like to ask that y'all definitely have, have heavy consideration in saying yes. Um, there's a lot of us that, uh, work very hard, diligent, uh, anywhere from forty-eight to seventy-two hours a week. And a lot of us work, I got a hundred-and-fifty hours on this paper here, nothing small. Uh, and we also have employees that also have to work extra hours at other jobs just to keep up. Uh, waitress, I don't know what he does, roadside stand, farm, eggs, I do tailor work, not seamstress, please God, not a seamstress. Um, uh, really, that's all there is to it. I just want to keep it simple. I want to make sure that we can get Pender County employees, uh, the best pay rate we can to keep them competitive with other outside sources such as New Hanover, Brunswick, Duplin, all of them, keep us competitive. Um, that way, we can keep good medics in line and fire people as well. Um, that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your comments.
Those are all the sign-offs, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, so at this time, we're gonna move on to item eight, consent agenda. Uh, everybody's had an opportunity to read those items. At this time, we'll consider a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda? It's unanimous, thank you, that motion passes. We're gonna move on to item nine, nine point one, resolution authorizing approval of Surf City power tech display on July third, Mr. Batson.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. Before we use the, um, resolution to approve the Surf City Firework, they'll be done in Soundside Park on July third, and just ask them for your approval, please.
Okay, uh, I believe we've historically approved this, correct?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Also, motion carries, thank you, Mr. Batson. Nine point two, oh, you're up again, okay? Uh, this one's for Union Rescue Squad's power tech.
Union Rescue Squad wishes to hold their July fourth event on Saturday, the July second, twenty-twenty-two, and just looking for your approval, please.
Okay.
Motion for approval?
We have a motion?
Second.
Two seconds? All those in favor? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Batson. All right, we're gonna go on to nine point three, award of, and approval of a contract to complete EWP Phase Two bank stabilization. Oh, this is Mr. Daniels, or Mr. Adams.
That was mouthful, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, what you have before you this afternoon is staff's recommendation to award a contract and a purchase order to Land Mechanic Designs of Willow Springs, North Carolina to execute the bank stabilization portion of round two of the EWP project. Just a quick refresher, this is a grant-funded project through the USDA and the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, and it's related to Hurricane Florence. So we put this project out to bid in March, and our, uh, the proposals that we received from the four companies that bid on the project were significantly over budget. So we worked with our technical consultant to, uh, change some of the materials, and we asked those companies to provide a revised scope, or excuse me, a revised cost estimate. And, uh, their revised cost estimates fell within our budget. So, um, based on the selection committee reviewing the revised proposals, staff is recommending a contract and a purchase order in the amount of two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars to Land Mechanic Design of Willow Spring, North Carolina.
And, Mr. Adams, this, um, this is as part of the emergency watershed protection, is the two million that was awarded just simply for the, the bank stabilization portion of the project?
No, ma'am, that's the project budget in total. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what do we anticipate that the bank, uh, stabilization portion of the project will cost?
What do we anticipate now or previously?
Either one.
Well, now, we anticipate it to cost two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight.
So that's the total cost for what areas?
Uh, there's one site in Willard off Lake Road, just downstream of Penderly Lake. And then there's one site on the river behind the Wildlife Depot off Shaw Highway. So those are the two sites.
Are those the only two sites that will be included in this round?
Hey, yes, ma'am.
Stabilization?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so a lot of good work's been done in this area since Hurricane Florence. Um, there was a lot of visibility given to, um, some inland flooding that occurred, um, as a result of thirty-seven inches we received during Hurricane Florence um, over those three days that it sat on top of us. Uh, you know, um, so the, the maintenance and, 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 uh, stabilization of these banks, and then also, um, the removal of some of the debris that's been done, and also the trapping of beavers. All that is being done to help reduce the amount of flooding that is realized inland when we have one of these storm events. Hopefully, we won't have another three-day event. Um, but we don't know that we won't have thirty-seven inches. Um, and, um, sometimes we get the downflow from other locations that results in flooding in our, in our county. So, um, this has been a good project, um, we got, we've gotten some good press out of it, and there's been a lot of benefit to the citizens, I think. So, um, with that, um, do we have a motion to?
Motion for approval?
Could I ask one question?
Sure, Mr. Brown.
Daniel, when, when we talk about material change?
Yes, sir.
What, what does that mean exactly? Are we talking about the type of debris that can be removed?
No, sir, this is, this isn't specific for debris removal. There's a couple of different components of this project. So debris removal was just one component of the project, this is specific for bank stabilization.
Putting rocks on it.
Right.
So, so we're talking about the type of material that you put back?
Right, so, so where there's been significant erosion on the banks of these channels, uh, putting a material down to stabilize that so that the banks don't wash out, which can, uh, in the case of Willard, affect farm roads in that culvert. And then on the northeast Cape Fear, uh, you know, there's the, the Wildlife Resource Commission depot further back from that bank. So it's about protecting the bank and cutting down on erosion.
And sediment.
Which, which falls into the river or the streams.
Yep.
Uh, if it's not stabilized.
Yep.
Okay, so we have to change the material in order to stay within budget?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Any other questions?
We have a motion, uh, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Passes unanimously, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
How's our beaver project going?
We're on to nine point four, approval of amendment to the Housing Authority Administrative Plan. Is this your first time presenting to us?
I just, I'm not a public speaker either, just feel like I'm at the principal's office.
Um, if you would, tell us who you are and what your, what your duties are.
I'm Sue Salvo, I'm the Pender County Housing Director.
Right.
And today, we're here to ask for an amendment to the Pender County Housing Admin Plan. Um, we've got some wording we need to change for vouchers, which we're allowed to select vouchers for different things. Um, we'd like to head in for special assistance for displaced families. And we also are requesting free emergency vouchers to increase them, I believe, from five to ten. So we will be using seven of the displaced vouchers for country court.
And this is in, in addition to what we already have, uh, allotted for vouchers?
Right.
Correct?
This, right, cuz we, we haven't utilized all our vouchers, so we can utilize them and spread them out for different categories.
Right, right, okay.
This is not gonna affect our, our, our budget a bit, but.
No.
We talked, we talked about this before.
Yep, any questions from my fellow board members?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, a motion for, uh, item nine point four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It passes unanimously?
Then I guess I need to.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And then, uh, nine point five is also, it's really, it's really, it's really one side to the other, so I'll make the motion for nine point five.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item nine point five, all those in favor? Again, that one passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, and, um, I'm glad that you were able to get, introduce yourself so the public understands who, who you are.
You did a good job.
Yes, ma'am. All right, we'll move on to item nine point six, approval for receipt of grant monies. Oh, we withdrew that one, yep, yep, okay. Thanks for keeping me, uh, on, on course here. Move on to nine point seven, approval of increase in budget allocation to Pender EMS and Fire for salary increases. Mr. Basden.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, felt commissioners, I have a brief statement I'm gonna read. Um, our budget request, if we're not changed, we do have some options toward the end I would reveal to you. Let me through my statement, you don't hear me?
No.
You can't hear me, you hear me now?
No.
Okay. First, I would like to give a shout-out to all the employees here today. I did not invite these employees, they wanna come on their own and represent themselves. And also wanna rep, uh, uh, acknowledge that this week is National EMS Week. Thanks for all you do, guys, we really appreciate it. Um, the past few years have been particularly challenging with COVID-nineteen. Went through a lot, the untimely death of our fire chief, Chief Cobal, and retirement of our former chief, Chief Sullivan. Through it all, our staff has answered every call with professionalism and caring second to none, even while their own family and friends were dying and sick. This past Friday, we were surprised and dismayed to receive an email message from the county manager that can be, be viewed as nothing less than a threat of a takeover of our private, nonprofit company. This threat was made in exchange for funds we requested to pay our employees competitively with our own surrounding counties. Our board of directors will be meeting tomorrow morning, as soon as I can get them together. Um, and we will come back and. And we will come back with a rebuttal to the email that Mr. County Manager sent out. As a background, we have submitted our honest budget proposal to the county manager over one month ago. And with that, what we thought at the time would be competitive wages for our employees over an average of ten percent. That was current gun rate. And a three percent for our administration. The budget was admittedly expensive, as we know. As it included another shift for employees to enable EMS to move the twelve-hour shifts. The twelve-hour shifts were requested due to paramedics leaving our company at a high rate and citing their problems created by running for twenty-four hours straight, particularly during COVID-19. They left to join other county departments as well as private facilities offering comparable or higher pay in eight to twelve-hour shifts. We are currently down fourteen of twenty-seven budgeted paramedics. We have very few questions or concern regarding the budget from our county personnel. Approximately four weeks ago, realizing that we were down, our Wake County, approximately four weeks ago, realized there were seventy paramedics down. Wake County raised wages to over twenty-one percent on average for EMS employees across the board. Soon after, counties and municipalities, surrounding counties started offering across-the-board increases for their first responders as well. Those increases were effective immediately. Our salaries were competitive with surrounding counties until that time. As we learned of the published salaries by position for surrounding counties, we listed them position by position on a spreadsheet against our current salaries. It was determined in order to maintain competitive with those counties, we were due to aggregate, aggregate of twenty-five percent increase for operations staff while administration was still only receiving three percent, which is currently five point three percent below inflation. We quit, we requested an amendment of the original budget reflecting the twenty-five percent increase. And since our staff has been vigorously recruited by other surrounding agencies, we requested the increase start immediately. We were meeting with our board of directors to form an appropriate response to the county manager's email message. However, since the commissioner sits on the board of, of the county finance director, the county finance director attends our board meetings, it must be known that we are surprised by this vehemently and vehemently reject the implications of mismanagement. We heard nothing of those implications, which are still not clear, until we request a large sum of salaries necessitated, necessitated by the market. We are more than willing to discuss any issues which you current, you currently have with the management of our company. We are willing to return to the table to negotiate other viable options. However, it is a fact that if we are to maintain the excellent service our company provides, the citizens of Pender County need to approve the salary increases is imperative to our company. Uh, we are also asking, we were about to get into merger talks, and we are still asking to do those merger talks and get around this, um, email that Mr. County Manager sent out. Finally, we can make some changes to the budget that have cut out a lot of stuff that we need to buy for future fire trucks, future ambulances, future personnel. We asked for twelve-hour shifts. We could cut that cost for savings of one million four and fifty thou, fifty thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars. We could cut twelve-hour shifts, no new fire debt, no new ambulances, no increases in special operations. It would cut it, cut it a total of one million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's all I've got to say tonight. I want y'all to consider this very, these guys here have worked nonstop the past two years. We thought our call volume would drop when COVID went away. They have not, as we, as we gave you all this information and showed you the call volume increases, by nine o'clock in the morning, all our trucks are out and running on EMS side. Our fireside as well, they're being recruited every day. Uh, these people are very, an integral part of the safety of Pender County residents. And to provide that response, we need to increase the wages, guys, because if not, these people are gonna walk. They don't want to walk. They do not want to walk. But how do you tell your families? That, hey, I can drive forty-five minutes up the road and get a fifteen thousand dollar raise. And we're not asking that kind of raise. We know we cannot be like Johnston County and do forty-two percent. The twenty-five percent, we're better to do what we need to do for this year's budget. So I, Adam, we ask you to please approve this budget.
Everett, can you push that down?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's one thing I wanted to clarify. We're not trying to beat, you know, and I say we, because I've been on the board forever.
Yes, sir.
Pender EMS Fire Board. Not trying to beat them. We're just trying to stay competitive.
That's what we're trying to do, sir.
We've had to battle the same thing with the, you know, teachers supplement. We go to ten percent, they'll go to twelve. We go to twelve, you know, it's, it's kind of a vicious cycle, but the first responder thing has really come to a head.
It, nothing we wanted, trust me, we were not, we have not planned on that. It's something we did not want to do. But it was, it was, the market is demanding it now.
This is, this is, uh, this is a request to get to the next budget year, which y'all obviously know this is. This year, we will pull it out of fund balance, I'm assuming, but you can't pay for it out of fund balance on a recurring debt. So from our perspective, then obviously that's part of the, the budget increase has got to come somewhere.
We understand.
Fully expect, I mean, the, the cost of, uh, EMS and fires gone up everywhere, just like everything else. We're all seeing it. So, you know, I think that we're gonna be asked to address that, and we have been asked. But that's gonna be a reality this next budget when it comes time to raise our hands to continue to fund it if it gets funded or not. I don't want to see as considered, we need to go to the twelve hours.
We do, we, we can avoid that for a few years, you know, we could put it off, but I don't. Uh, we lost a lot of people wanting to go to twelve-hour shifts. I had one, uh, my last email I got before I left the office was another employee turning in a resignation, going to work with Women's Health. Twelve hour, eight-hour shift for her and a little more money. That's, that's the stuff we're dealing with every day.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
I want to ask one question. Would that twenty-five percent increase as requested in your revised budget?
Yes, ma'am.
That you've submitted, will that cover the cost of the twelve-hour shift or would that be an additional expense?
That will cover everything.
The twelve hour?
The twenty-five percent increase on top was the, just the twenty-five percent on the salaries. Now, it included that twelve-hour shift change.
Like I said, that's the aggregate number, right?
The aggregate number, yes, sir.
And this, this three hundred and sixty thousand dollar supplement, will that cover an immediate twelve-hour shift?
That would cover immediate, it wouldn't be twelve hours, no, no, ma'am. It would take us a little while to get that twelve-hour implemented. Um, that's not gonna happen overnight. Due to the number of employees we have now, we don't have enough employees to cover it. And that's why we've come to the conclusion, we can put that twelve-hour off for a while and reduce that budget down, so. We don't want to, we don't, I don't, I, there's different feelings on who wants to work twelve hours and who, who does not.
Well, I can see that it would be a quality of life thing for our boys and their families. And it could also be a safety liability issue.
It is, and the younger people that work for us, they love twelve-hour shifts. Fireside, those guys, their call volume is low enough, they don't have to worry about a twelve-hour shift. EMS, we're running, we're averaging forty, forty-two calls a day. That's a lot of calls. Um, and these guys get tired and they outrun a call at two o'clock in the morning. There's a lot of liability there. And we understand it's a lot of money asked at one time. Um, we, we, we probably got yesterday people wanting to work twelve-hour shifts, and we do twenty-four-hour shifts. Younger guys love twenty-four-hour shifts, as y'all know, y'all my age. We got nine o'clock, we looking for a bed. These young guys stay up all night.
So, um, if you delay the converting to twelve-hour shifts from twenty-four, what's the ask on the percent increase on your revised budget?
I do not have the percent increase. Chad was working on those numbers with his, his, we not got those percentages. If we go back and don't do any fire, no fire debt increases and no twelve-hour shifts, we should be able to request eleven percent on EMS side and eleven percent on fireside as the tax increases, the closest number we can get right now.
Is that gonna?
Give or take.
Is that gonna do anything to help in our attrition problem?
Money is what people want. Um, that's, that's been our request. I would say raise your hands in the audience, but, uh, like everybody's at a football game or something back there, so I'm not gonna do that.
Well, I mean, I, I, like, I think you hit it down the head. I, I, I mean, I think the majority of our folks like working in Pender, I hope.
They do.
But, you know, a lot of money, money talks.
Money talks, and like I say, we're losing, we're still losing that. It's not stopped. It's hard to tell your family, I can drive down the road an hour and get fifteen or more thousand dollars per year to, to make our life a little more easier. We're not even asking for that.
We've, we've got a good crew.
We got a excellent crew.
The interactions that I or my family have had have been excellent, professional, and, and, you know, very.
So this three sixty only covers till the end of this fiscal year, right? So in, in reality, this is, uh, if we approve it this year, then it rolls over to a bigger number for next year, correct?
Yes, sir.
And we only have two months left, so it's three sixty times.
They have six weeks left, actually. So, we could, we could probably, if, if we started to raise this June first, we could probably cut that number somewhere in half. But that was based on first of May, maybe a little week before that, maybe, but.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this is probably what, uh, two point four million-dollar ask for next year, if we approve it this year.
If we take the twelve-hour shifts and stuff off, yes, or somewhere in that neighborhood.
As I said, I think the safest thing, or maybe I'm, maybe I'm overthinking it, but would be to just save the twenty-five percent, be implemented as soon as you can versus putting a hard dollar on, or is that, am I making it too complicated? Or is it? You know, we talked about what the number was, we took a lot of, to have a way for this meeting to come around. I, I'll go with one, I'm just saying. Do you say twenty-five percent? And it, like you said, when would it actually kick in?
All right, if we do the emergency funds request, it would kick in June first.
June first.
At this time, it'd take us, it'd take us several days to get everybody's payroll adjusted.
But, but again, this three hundred and sixty thousand dollars is for a twenty-five percent across the board.
It's not across the board. The twenty-five percent is an aggregate number, as Mr. Davis pointed out. Everybody in the company will not get a twenty-five percent raise. The raises will be based on your length of time here, your position in the company. We have several, probably several different positions in the company. It all makes different pay scales. So we're based on where you're at in the company, how you've been here, what's your position, what's your responsibilities. That would be the process to give that twenty-five percent across the board. And that's probably not gonna cover to where we need to go, but we knew we could come here and ask for a little forty-five percent.
Sure. So, um, I guess I'm somewhat confused because if, if we simultaneously go to a twelve-hour shift to help the attrition problem and do a salary increase, the ask is twenty-five percent. But if we don't do the twelve hour, then the ask is eleven percent.
Twenty-two, it's, uh, twenty-two percent, wasn't it? Eleven, eleven?
Uh, it was twenty-two percent. It was eleven percent on the fires, on the EMS side and eleven percent on the fireside. Where initially we were asking eleven for the EMS and fifteen on the fireside.
Okay.
That's not right, Sandy, correct my number?
Yeah.
I didn't write that down.
You have to, you have to kind of introduce yourself.
I wondered where you were.
Well, every, they, they're pretty much going forward out of these days.
No, Sandy's my accountant. She's CPA, she keeps me straight.
I'm Sandy Miller, I'm Finance Officer for Pender EMS and Fire. And originally, we had asked for ten percent raise overall. And then when we saw the market competition, we realized we needed to increase that.
Three percent administrative and ten percent.
Yeah, and twenty-five percent ba, aggregate for the operations staff. So, and that included going to twelve-hour shifts on the EMS side. So the total thing, the budget you have in front of you now is, I think, four point four million dollar ask. And that would include both things. To do that, you would have to, I think, take fire to fifteen cents and take EMS to eleven cents. You still have EMS tax paying for fire in that scenario. There are options that I laid out, uh, different ways to pay for fire, but we haven't discussed any of those.
Yeah, that's a, that's a bigger picture. It's not just, it's the, it's the whole system of, of doing it.
A different way.
Different way is, is definitely something.
And that's intertwined with some other issues that need to be addressed, so.
So then, we, we could wait to do twelve-hour shifts. We would need to add two Piccolo trucks to make that work because then we have to take the stress off our EMS crews. And for right now, the people that want to go to twelve-hour shifts could go on the Piccolo trucks. And we put up two Piccolo trucks and everyone else would stay on twenty fours. We would try to make that work with people leaving and coming on as far as what kind of shift configuration they want to work for a new employee.
Definitely in the future, we're gonna have to let it go our shift.
But we are, we can do it for this year, if that's what everybody wants to do.
You mean this year, the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal?
Yes.
And that would save one point four, you know, I don't have my glasses on.
Yeah, one point four fifty.
Yeah, one point four fifty, just in not going to the twelve-hour shifts. The only other thing we can cut in our budget, because we need to get our ra, our salaries where they need to be to be competitive and to keep the people we have. We could cut out the fire equipment. But remember, it takes eighteen months to build a fire truck.
And to keep the ISO ratings, we have our ISO rating, and our district, we cover a three. Thank you. Lay it on that one.
People start seeing our ISO rating go back up.
I see it go, go back up every year.
No, it's not that, that when they see their, their insurance rates go up, then that's when they're gonna get excited.
The ones that are behind you.
That's right.
Um, and we work hard to get that.
We bought used fire trucks before. That's the ladder truck we have right now. And Josh and Peggy, they always spend a lot of money on that used fire truck, keeping it going.
Every day.
And, so.
And we gotta have that, they gotta have the ladder truck to keep our ISO rating where they're at.
It's aging out.
It's aging out. Fire equipment is a, anything emergency services has got a date on it.
Well, plus you, plus you have technical standards that require periodic replacement of equipment.
Right, that's what it's referring to.
And some of it, you, you have no choice, right?
And we have no choice in our equipment. Our, all of our equipment, whether it's a, I won't say a Mayanade, but a Mayanade up to a defibrillator, we have, even the radios that we talked about the other day. The radios have expiration dates, they figured that.
Yeah, everything we use has a, has a life. And when that life is done, we can't use it anymore. And that's to protect safety of citizens and our employees. And that's all related to EMS rules and ISO ratings. The three hundred and sixty thousand dollars was requested over a month ago. And at that time, it would take three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to go ahead and implement the raises?
To operational staff.
Operational staff.
Of twenty-five percent.
Right. But now we're a month later. So we would have two payrolls left to get to the end of the year, because I did one of them today. So we have two payrolls left. So basically, half of that to get to the end of the year.
Thank you.
So, I guess the awkwardness here is that for us to approve the, this supplemental amount predisposes us to continue that increase for the rest, for the, for the fiscal year.
And we came in requesting this note, that and explained it, and you got.
I'm sorry?
We came in, the first time we presented this and explained that, that, we understand that.
Right.
Another software situation to be in.
So, just.
So that's what other counties?
That's our hesitancy right now.
And that's what other counties have done, so we can't, we can't.
At this point, we're two payrolls away. So, if you want to wait and just adopt the new budget, July first.
I'd like to see this make.
But we got employees who are being recruited every day.
Every day.
Because those have already been implemented in other counties and municipalities. Our objective is to just tell you the truth about what we're dealing with and what we got and what we need to do. If you don't want to hear it.
You've been very candid, you've been very upfront, and you've done a great job of educating us on the issues over a period of time.
That's what our intent with our budget this year, to show you exactly what the fireside cost to operate and what the EMS side cost to operate. That's why we presented it like we did. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
All right. So, uh, before we move forward, just to be clear, earlier in this meeting, we had, we know that we're gonna get hit with the resolution to be placed on the ballot in November for a hundred and seventy-eight million dollar school loan. hit with a resolution to be placed on the ballot in November for a hundred and seventy-eight million dollar school loan. So our citizens' taxes are going up substantially with that, and this would require, this request, if, if approved, would re- would, would require a substantial increase in the fire tax, and a substantial increase, again, to our citizens. So, um, and we're also getting an increased request from the Sheriff's Department and from the, from other departments, so. Um, I just want everybody to be cognizant of that. Um, you can't single this item out and vote in a vacuum relative to this. So, at this time, I'll consider a motion.
What, can I say something before you show me a motion?
I would like to comment as well.
All right, Commissioner Brown?
Commissioner, Chairman Pete Meyer, I totally agree with what you're saying, because we're, we're, we're gonna see, this is just one small part of this, it ripples out. We're gonna see expenses increase for our county, and I, I do agree with you on that. I also know that we, we don't have a choice here. I don't see if we wanna keep good people, we wanna keep an organization together. It's a tough decision, but at the same time, the alternative doesn't look too good, you know? So, I just wanted to say that.
Commissioner Newt?
You wanted to?
I'm representing of rural county as Mr. McCoy and I do. Um, our EMS squad is the first line of defense for our totally aging population in the rural communities. Um, we don't have an overabundance of medical caretakers, and sometimes, our EMS department is the only line of defense for our aged rural residents. Um, and they're relied upon heavily, and like Mr. Brown, I really don't see how we can well afford, um, given that it's our responsibility to provide for the safety and welfare of our citizens, not to provide resources, um, to make that happen.
I suppose I, I support EMS, and we're gonna do all we can to help you guys, and we've been working in it a moment, so. Um, we also got to think about our taxpayers and the family, what's costing them money to, I wish it cost them living, but there's two sides to every issue, and I'm gonna look at what we can do and help. Appreciate, hold on, hold on, that are any, and I let you on call one time, day and night, yes. And I appreciate what you do, and we'll see what we can do.
But to make it a little bit more palpable, EMS, um, you generate, uh, funds and recover, um, funds, and to date have been working in the black, so that, that's somewhat helpful to the equation.
Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I approve for approval, uh, make most approval of the Pender EMS and Fire requesting, I'm just gonna say, uh, twenty-five percent aggregate salary increase, because it's not, we, we've got two pay periods, so that figure is different now. So, is it safe for me just to word it at twenty-five percent based on the period?
Uh, I don't know if Meg can, and I'm not sure, presuming they're gonna want the increase so they can start making them. She's gonna need authorization to do that, ain't she, Chad?
Uh, we, we, we can, we can do that and caveat it right here and memorialize it in this meeting and in the motion, that it's what it, it's up to, I could say up to, but we're gonna do the pa- the two pay periods that they have remaining. I mean, I, it's not, it's not really gonna equal three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Well, hang on, Ms. Miller might have that figure. Ms. Miller, do you have that figure? How much we reduce to three hundred and sixty thousand? I bet you do. About one hundred and.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, because they were basing them. Okay, all right. Then I'm willing to amend that, uh, Pender EMS and Fire, uh, approve it for an additional, uh, holy smokes, oh, a hundred and eighty thousand, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right, went blank for a second. A hundred and eighty thousand for current implementation, requesting, uh, twenty-five percent salary increase for operational personnel. As memorialized by the discussions with the Pender EMS and Fire as well.
And I'll second.
Can we have a motion? Can you specify that that's coming from fund balance? Cause we don't have it anywhere else, I don't believe, Mr. Manager.
Well, I mentioned earlier, it's gotta come out of fund balance.
Yeah, but they, they, you just include that in the motion so Meg can process it.
To come from fund balance.
So we have a motion, and we have a second, Ms. Newton?
Yes.
All those in favor? Those opposed? So the motion carries four to one. So we're gonna move on to item nine point eight. Approval of budget amendment to decrease Health Department revenues, Ms. Moser?
This is a, a budget request to decrease our, our revenues by thirty-nine thousand nine hundred. Uh, these funds came from the state, and it was to address COVID, particularly with the schools. The original, uh, guidance was that we had to hire an RN, and, uh, a few months went by, health directors made it very clear that, you know, we can't even recruit enough RNs for regular work, much less for, for this. State came back and offered some other disciplines, but by the time they did that, this money had to have been spent, uh, this month, and it was just not doable.
Right.
So, we need to be able to, uh, send that back.
Yep, okay.
And we're not the only county that's had to do that.
Any questions for Ms. Moser?
Why that word decrease? Decrease?
Well, sometimes it's not good, but, uh, are there any other questions or comments?
No, I'll be glad to make a motion.
We have a motion?
Check it out.
We have a second. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Moser. All right, we'll move on to nine point nine, text amendment to Pender County Code of Ordinances, section twenty-four dash seventy. Travis Henley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Um, this item in front of you is a little different than what I normally bring in front of you. This is a text amendment to the Code of Ordinances for, um, Article twenty-four, Sections sixty-nine and seventy. Sorry, my computer fell asleep here. Uh, essentially, what it does, uh, current county ordinance, uh, says that you can't fire a firearm within two hundred feet of a dwelling, except in very particular circumstances. But one of the places that, uh, that section of the Code of Ordinances does not address is existing, uh, businesses that are selling firearms, and what happens when a new home is built within two hundred feet of that business after the business has been, has been, excuse me, legally established. And so what this amendment to the Code of Ordinances would do is it would, um, add to the exemptions list a legally established business conducting the sale of firearms and the testing of those firearms from the two hundred-foot, um, separation requirement from a home, if the home is constructed after the establishment of that business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If I could, this is something I brought forward, so this is not a, a change staff made arbitrarily. I did ask for this, and, uh, with the help of the attorney, and with planning, um, trying to find a way to protect these businesses that are in the county that, um, might fall into a, a situation because of growth that would hinder their business because of this requirement. So, I appreciate staff that worked on it, the attorney. I think this is a fair, the, the, the language is very clear and, uh, simple. And it, it accomplishes what I think we need to protect those businesses, not that there's that many of them in the county. And, um, Commissioner Brown, it, and members of the board, we ha- there are state statutes that, for instance, if you move too close to an existing gun range, you can't then complain that there's a gun range there. We have similar things for the, our firearms, that they can be protected from that. This is the equivalent of that on a local level, because there's not a state ordinance, I mean, state law statute. Uh, it's a county ordinance, so we would need to address it. It wouldn't be something done by the state, but that, that there are existing for other, uh, what, again, people move next to something and then complain that somebody that's been doing it for thirty years is doing what they've been doing for thirty years, because they moved in there. And so that's, and I appreciate Travis helping, because that's a, it, that sort of goes along, it is different, but it goes along with the idea of some of the things in planning of what do you do when you've got an existing use versus, uh.
It'd be like grandfathered in.
Yes, yes, sir. That's what this does, and it, it would not apply to a, if I've got a house and somebody moves in and opens a firearm business, they don't get the benefit of this. But if I've got my business that I've been operating, and somebody moves in with a house close to me, then my business is, like you say, grandfathered and it's protected. And this is not a shooting range, this is just testing of firearms for the sale. Yes, shooting range expressly excluded, yes. Right.
Very reasonable approach to me.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Henley?
Even if you're ready, I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
See you later on.
All right, we're moving on to item thirteen point one. I guess we'll come in as the Rocky Point Water and Sewer District, Mr. Keel.
Good evening. Uh, this is, uh, as, as I've had before y'all before, uh, once a subdivision gets put in, um, they officially dedicate, uh, the utilities to, uh, Pender County Utilities, uh, and so that is what we have here, is wind water phase five A has been completed. It's been approved by PCU and by, uh, DWQ, and it is, uh, this is requesting, uh, approval of a resolution to accept the DTA dedication, uh, for those.
And that means that's been accepted and, and everything's been found to be okay?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Keel? Consider a motion then?
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Keel. We'll come back out of Pender, or Rocky Point Water and Sewer and back into this board meeting. Um, no items, Ms. Moser, for Pender County Health? Okay. Um, then we're ready for item nineteen. Items from the county attorney, county manager, assistant county manager, and county commissioners. Um, Trey?
Yes, sir. Um, and in my folder, we have been appointed a case manager for the National Opioid Settlement. So as I reported to you last time, it's getting closer to there actually being money in hand that gets distributed from that, I think that's. And then, um, have some items for closed session. Uh, item three, attorney-client. Uh, item four, economic development, and item six, personnel.
Okay. Anything else, Trey?
No, sir.
All right, um, Mr. County Manager?
Just on the opioid, uh, caseworker information, the portal has been set up. Um, I was, I was set up as the project manager, or whatever title it's been. But the, um, the login information and, um, password and everything, to change all that's been provided to Meg as well as, um, Tara. So, uh, at some point in time, that'll need to be changed, I think, as it gets closer to a distribution point. That's all I have for open session. It's Trey.
All right. Um, Mr. Vane?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Just wanted to, uh, mention that, um, we had a hurricane drill over with, uh, emergency management, statewide hurricane drill last Thursday, and it was a great event. And, um, it, it was just very neat as far as the effort they put into it, the conversations we were able to have, and basically talk through some various situations and so forth. Both Doug and myself were a part of that, and so that was a, a good event. Uh, wanted to mention that the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority fifty-four inch transmission line dedication is this Friday at ten-thirty at Kings Bluff Water Pump Station, which I understand is in Regwood. So I just wanted to provide that as a reminder as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
Actually, Alan mentioned the, the one item that I was gonna discuss, and that was last Thursday's exercise, and just to thank, uh, we, I think we had reputation, rep- representation from all but one department. Uh, and everyone getting into the room to understand what everyone else does and has to deal with during a hurricane was very valuable, or ver- really during any disaster, but a hurricane specifically. So, thank you to all the staff, department heads that were able to attend that.
Yeah, I'm glad we're implementing these, uh, these, these training sessions to make sure that everybody knows what their role is and, um, to, so that we don't find ourselves in a catastrophe, um, and then have to, you know, um, figure it out as we, as we work through the catastrophe. Uh, this will help us to allow cool heads to exist and prevail, I think, and, uh, it should re- give us better results if and when we, we do have a, a catastrophe of that nature. So, um, Commissioner Brown, you have any comments for today's meeting?
Yeah, I do have something to say, and I really don't know how to say it. But, uh, short of seeing the letter that Chief Bston was referring to, that came from the manager, I'll just go ahead and put it out there, I did ask for some more oversight on these departments, or was it just picking on any one department? So I know this is a public meeting, I'll just go ahead and say it. I don't know that the manager said anything that, uh, was it feelings conveyed by myself or maybe even others on the board?
Yeah, I agree with you.
And me as well.
I agree with you.
And, and so, short of making someone angry, it's not fair for him to take the hit on this.
No, I agree, I agree. And I apologize to you, Chad. I, I, I meant to make that statement, and I just, I got tied up in it and I didn't. Uh, but I do agree with you, you did exactly what you had been instructed to do, and, um, I don't think it was of a threatening nature. I think that everybody up here recognizes we're in a transition, and there's gotta be some concessions made, and that was what was communicated in Chad's letter.
It's a lot of money.
And it's, for words worth, I, I, I didn't, I didn't want to get too deep into that at that particular time, because we're trying to deal with one thing at a time. But, uh, I got the phone call soon after the email sent, and I told Chad Friday, I, I said, I believe that what the manager was doing is what the majority of the county commissioners are doing.
Well, I didn't say anything with the full group.
Okay, so I relate that.
I didn't say anything with the full group in here, because, uh, we needed to move on from the business at hand, but I plan on having a conversation with Chief Bston to let him know that that was something that I conveyed, that I had concerns about, and I don't think that the manager should, uh, step out on that limb without me supporting him.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I apologize, Chad.
And I will certainly make that clear to Chief Bston as well, Chad, and I, I got lost in the rest of the message. I, that was.
That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Newt?
I want to thank the board for the accommodations made at our last meeting, um, with regards to Spring Fest and those types of issues. I attended Spring Fest, and it was a lovely day. It was a lovely event. It was, um, not a blueberry festival, certainly, but it was a small group of locals buying local products and goods, and it was, it was well-received, and everybody looked like they were having a good time.
And it was good to see everybody.
And it was like, it was like Home Week. It was really nice.
It's been going on.
It was awesome. Forty years. Forty years, forty years.
Has it been going on that long?
And I enjoyed the, the small intimate, uh, air of the thing. So, there's a lot of work putting that on, and I hope it's able to continue in the future.
You were there just for the free food, weren't you?
I, I didn't eat a thing. I stood and worked all day.
But, you know, we, we, we do realize we got a little, we got a little, uh, wordy to clear up on our agreements and things like that.
Yes, yes.
It was the right, the right thing, due at the right time.
And I, I spoke and asked that, and I assume, Mr. Shiplin, that that reaching out will happen.
It did on Friday. We had a forty-five minute conversation.
Wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I have been selected to, uh, participate in the flooding and sea level, um, the American Flood Coalition, and will be attending in DC in June, um, a seminar on flooding and sea level rise. So I'm pretty excited about that, so that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner McCord?
Yeah, I, I really enjoyed Spring Festival, too. I had a chance to attend. I saw David there, too.
Yes.
He was there.
Yep.
It was a good, a lot of people I hadn't seen in a long time, good time to talk to people. And also really enjoyed square dancing with my daughter and granddaughter in the street dance on Friday night. Yeah, it was a lot of fun, so got to move around a little bit. So just fun.
I have one more thing I want to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, today I had an opportunity. I got a call from the Lower Cape Fear, um, Water and Sewer Director with regards the, um, uh, special appropriations request that was made, uh, for the fifty-two million to complete the last ten miles of the, uh, Cape Fear Water Pipeline coming into, uh, New Hanover and Pender County. Um, you will recall that, uh, recent, um, problems with that water line revealed some, um, initial installation flaws, which it's reasonable for us to assume we're going to have problems in the near future, similar to, uh, what we've just had, and that's why the funding request has been made. I, uh, sent correspondence to Senator Raven, Senator Jackson, and Senator Lee, um, requesting their assistance, um, because there's been some talk that perhaps special appropriations would not be allowed during the, um, semi-budget, uh, year. So, that's what we're hoping does not happen, so.
Okay.
If you talk to any of them, let them know.
You got anything else, Commissioner McCord? Yes, yes. Commissioner Williams?
Uh, no.
Okay, um, I got a couple of things. Uh, tomorrow's primary election day, if you didn't participate in early voting, I would encourage everybody that is listening to, uh, exercise their right and get out and vote. Um, turnout has been low this year, according to the article in The Post, so, uh, um, as a non-presidential year, that is typical, but, um, some very key things going on, and I would encourage people to get out and vote. Um, I did attend Spring Fest, it was good to see everybody. And then, uh, um, in conjunction with that, I received a call from former mayor, Bergall Mayor Pete Cowan, relative to, um, the new policy around, um, uh, vendors parking on the streets and, um, asking us to reconsider that policy's implementation during the Blueberry Festival, so I wanted to make sure that I shared that he, I had received that call from him.
He called me also, and I want to discuss that with you afterwards.
Okay. So, um, that's all I have. Um, at this time, we'll consider a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to go into closed session on the items three, four, and six.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those favor? We are in closed session.
Apologize, we ran over a little bit. We had several things we needed to discuss. Let's give a minute for our county attorney to get here and...
We lost those people going down the hall.
I'd let you start, but you'd have to just redo it, so we'll just wait a second.
Sounds good to me.
Chairman, when you have no sign up, would you like me to ask people or suggest that they sign up again? Or I'm not gonna handle that.
Greg already suggested another sign up about two minutes ago.
Okay.
But that's your call.
I think part of it is it makes it easier for...
Yeah, just remind them if anybody intends to speak during any of these items.
If you think you may wish to speak on any item that's present, you need to sign in. As of now, we have no sign up, so we will be hearing no testimony from anyone.
Does that include applicants?
Yes. Yes.
Are you asking me something?
So this first item is a redo, right?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Blame that on me. It was funny, it was a two-two, I couldn't be here.
We don't have to wait for them to finish signing in.
Okay, so I think they're done. Are they done?
Almost.
You wanna go ahead and take care of your... Is it relative to this one or...
I agree with the next one.
It's the next one, okay. All right, Travis, let's not go all through this, but just hit the highlights so that Commissioner Williams is aware of what we're talking about here and to refresh our memory.
I've seen, and I've also seen the minutes in the video too, so...
Yes, sir. Our first case tonight is a continuance from the last commissioner's meeting. Mike Nato, applicant on behalf of Thomas and Rebecca Benfield owners requesting approval of the general use zoning map amendment to rezone two tracks totaling approximately eleven and a half acres from the RP Residential Performance Zoning District to the GB General Business Zoning District. These properties are contiguous with each other and are located on the east side of Highway seventeen just to the south of Hilltop. As I think the board mentioned, this case was presented to the board at their last meeting. Staff is respectfully recommending denial based on inconsistency with the Pender 2.0 comprehensive land use plan. Our planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval, and the Board of Commissioners motioned to approve the rezoning failed on a two-to-two vote, and then the board tabled it to this meeting. I can go through any other part of the presentation you want. The applicant is here as well, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Commissioner Williams, do you have any questions?
I do not. Nothing has changed since the last time.
No, sir.
Do any of the other commissioners have any questions?
Well, I was a little torn on this before because I know the 2.0 land use plan goes one direction. The planning board went a totally different direction. The only reason I considered that at the time was because everything just about surrounding it is just that. And that was the reason why normally I don't lean towards rezonings as a rule, but in this case I saw that it was, it didn't appear to be an unreasonable request based on what was around it. That was the reason why, Mr. Williams, I made the motion to approve it.
Yeah, I just, I was gonna make a statement somewhat similar in that I understand staff's recommendation based on the 2.0, but I'm leaning more toward, well, I don't lean more, I agree with the planning board. I think in this particular case that it's decent, good fit overall. So, you know, I'd be inclined to make the motion to approve it at an appropriate time.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments from any of the other commissioners?
Just if I may, for the record...
Sure.
An approved rezoning here would result in a modified comprehensive plan, future land use map by virtue of statutory requirements.
Understood. All right, at this time I'll consider a motion.
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes three to two.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Move on to item twenty-one point two, SUP. Mr. Feldman?
That was the one that was removed from the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Do we not need him to adopt the consistency statement as well?
I think...
I mean, you're checking what Commissioner Williams said about adjacent properties. I just wanna be sure you had enough to...
I appreciate you asking. That's a great point, but yes, I think what Commissioner Williams said is sufficient.
You're right. Thanks for keeping me on. Twenty-one point two has been withdrawn.
Yes, it has.
Twenty-one point three?
We do need to swear in.
I'm sorry.
He's in the daze.
Trying to...
He's zoned out.
And I guess this will be Mr. Johnson? He stands there. Raise your right hand. The challenge of the protest on the U.S. even be true to the whole country, they will be gone.
I do.
Thank you all.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Chris Hatcher.
The new guy.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, I bring before you SUP two zero two-two dash twenty-eight. This is a special use permit. Mr. David Johnson, the applicant, on behalf of Johnson Family Farms Holding LLC, also Beechtree Farms LLC is requesting approval for revision to an existing special use permit, SUP twenty twenty dash thirteen. The revision will now encompass an approximate total of two hundred and seventy-one point three-six acres in the RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District plus one additional use. The subject property is located at nine eight five Johnson Nursery Road in Union Township.
So this is basically an expansion of an existing special use permit, correct?
Correct.
And it's relative to Johnson Nursery, correct?
So the original SUP was for Mr. David Johnson's, the gardens of southeastern North Carolina. He wants to expand that use onto the other properties outlined in orange plus add an additional use to the already existing SUP. So there'd be a total of nine uses at this point on approximate two hundred and seventy-one acres.
So Travis, and I'm sorry, but I gotta ask Travis. Why is he, is because he's selling his products, is that what's forcing him? He's rural agricultural. I mean, can he not operate this business without his SUP?
There are, that's...
I mean, it's agricultural business.
When this originally came forward, certainly, you know, Johnson Nursery has operated under the bona fide farm statutes for a long time.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, kind of the nuance with bona fide farm is that certainly agricultural businesses are allowed and certainly encouraged under the bona fide farm statutes, but it's all tied back to what is actually produced on the farm. And so in our review of the initial request, certainly some of what was gonna be proposed is absolutely no question tied to the farm. But the SUP covers all of the other bases in case there are, there's a desire to hold events or do businesses that aren't directly tied to the farm.
Okay. I just didn't want you to have to do something unnecessarily when you may be able to do what you're doing without it, so, okay, I understand.
When this originally came forward, we looked as hard as we could.
I'm just trying to look out for Mr. Johnson and his family.
The analogy would be you've got a fruit stand that sells the stuff you grow on your property.
But you import some tomatoes.
And then you import some apples from Washington and some grapefruit from Florida and...
Yeah, yeah.
And then you have a wedding on the backside.
Well, the wedding's probably okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I asked the same question.
I love this place. I'm very happy that he's in Better County. I'm glad he's doing well.
Are you allowed to say that during this conversation?
Sure I am. I'm gonna have to say pretty much anything I want to.
He got gavel.
Go ahead.
All right, so collectively, the property is two hundred and seventy-one point three-six acres excluding the area that is in the Wathah Township. We can, here is an aerial view of the property. The site plan that's proposed by the applicant shows that it's gonna be constructed in phases, the gardens of southeastern North Carolina. And it is also important to note that as he goes through the site phases, each of the sites will have to be done through the review process. Here's another image. This is more condensed view of his site plan. And this is the more broader view, the more expansion that he's looking for. Access to the property is off of Johnson Nursery Road. They're proposing an entrance-only, entrance-only, entrance and exit-only, turn-in, turn-out. As we can see here, the traffic numbers on the screen, the volume and capacity for the section of Johnson Nursery Road is not equal.
Yeah, 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 okay. So it's not, it's not a high impact. That's good, that's good.
Our landscaping and buffering, since this will be done through... When Mr. Johnson will bring his phases forward, each of those phases will have to be, have to have the required buffering. Any areas that are residential abiding the property will have to have a C-type buffer. The road frontage along Johnson Nursery Road will have to have an A-type buffer. The B buffer will most likely not be used in this scale because it is all residential around the property. Here is a street view of the property looking north and south. This is across the street.
I just rode by all that the other day. I was out riding around, looking at stuff.
For the 2.0 comprehensive land use plan, we actually found nine classifications for the property that are consistent with the future land use plan. And those are listed in the board's packet. These proposed conditions are the same conditions from the original SUP.
And you guys are good with all those? Is that right, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
The additional use that Mr. Johnson is adding to his SUP is all other traveler accommodations because they are wanting to add cabins to the SUP or to the site plan.
Oh, cool.
Somewhat like the vineyard in Blaken County at the airport.
Mr. Johnson actually could speak on that a little bit more. He has asked me to have his site plan up for him, which actually has him located on his site plan.
Okay, we hear from him?
Yes, you may.
All right, let's do it. This has been a long time coming, hasn't it?
This has been a long time coming.
Yeah.
And the most important thing to realize is this is gonna be a long time coming.
It's an ecotourism destination opportunity.
The mission statement for the gardens is improving lives by cultivating inspiration.
Yeah, you might wanna speak at the podium. Yeah, please.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
So the mission statement for the gardens is improving lives by cultivating inspiration. And I could, without hesitation, spend two hours on this vision up here.
Please don't.
I would love the opportunity to take you on a tour of what we're doing. But basically, there are lots of ideas on that vision, and we will do it little by little. Wealth hastily gotten will dwindle, here gathers little by little will increase. So I'm certain that I will not see all of this in my lifetime, but I'll see some of it. And I think the goal is to go slowly and to do what I can do each year. I still have to run Johnson Nursery. And then we'll let the people who attend and the people who we partner with decide how fast we go and what we can accomplish. But there are, if this works, and let's say when this works, we will plan on having an event center there, which that's one reason for the special use permit. We... We believe that it needs to be big enough to seat 250 people, and so that's a pretty big deal. I don't see that happening in the next 10 years, but at some point, when we have events and they're regularly attended, we would need someplace to stay. And we thought on the plan, there are spots for 14 cottages, which are reverse floor plan where you sleep on the bottom floor. The top floor is for viewing the gardens. But again, there's so much on there that I could tell you about and would love to tell you about, but just ask questions, and I wish you'd come visit.
We... I would... I'm glad you extended that invitation because at some point, I would like to go out there and visit.
Well, coincidentally, we have an event Saturday called the Celebration of Blooms. It's our kickoff event for the gardens. It's kind of a ribbon cutting, but it is we're inviting people out to cast the vision. And so if you have time and $35, we'd love for you to come join us.
Okay. Sounds great.
The... There's one more really cool event, and then I'll stop here. In June, we... The way this will work for me is I have a lot of ideas, and when I find the right person with the right passion, the right skill, then we'll partner together. So I ran into a lady named Bree Arthur, who is a grain expert, and she grows grain in her backyard in the, I think in the Fuquay Varina area. And so Bree and I talked about it, and I'm taking her ideas, and we're doing it on four acres of property. So we have wheat, rye, barley, and oats already planted. It's about a month away from being mature. And in June, we're having an event called Grain to Oven where people come out, they're going to harvest it by hand, we're going to thresh it, window it, grind it in the flour, and then afternoon, we will make flatbread pizza. So that's one of many things we're going to do out there.
Cool.
And that's going to happen this June. So again, that one's 50 bucks, but if you can come and encourage your other people to come, we would be thrilled to have some support. And that's what it's going to take to make this thing work is people need to show up, and then we'll be encouraged to keep expanding, you know, this vision. Okay. I gave you a call, but I'm assuming I've talked enough.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Not for me.
Okay. What else?
He's the only sign up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, who do we have signed up?
He's the only... I'm sorry.
He's the only sign up? Okay.
So when you're ready for a motion?
So we can close the public comment period?
Yes, sir.
We'll close the public comment period, and we'll consider a motion.
At this time, I would like to make a motion that we approve the revision to the existing special use permit to enable the development, as noted, of the gardens of southeastern North Carolina, subject to the same special use conditions previously outlined by our planning staff.
We have a motion?
One second.
We have a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson.
Congratulations, Mr. Johnson.
Have safe travel back home.
We'll be aggressive on it. Hope to see y'all out there.
Yes, sir, you will.
Great. All right. We'll move on to our last item. 21.4, rezoning, 22... Well, we get to see the whole planning staff today.
That's right. Y'all just showing off now.
We just tried to make it a very chill for you.
You know I always like to hear from you, Travis.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our final application this evening is another general use rezoning request for two tracks of land totaling approximately 2.2 acres from the RP Residential Performance Zoning District to the GB General Business Zoning District. Shown on the screen is a zoning map of the area with the subject properties called out in blue. As you can see, there is some surrounding general business zoning both across US Highway 17 to the west as well as immediately south of these two properties. And of course, there is some surrounding residential zoning in the form of RA and RP. The aerial map on the screen shows a few manufactured homes here that are located on the subject property and that have since been removed under an open demolition permit, and the applicant is currently working to remove the remaining debris from those manufactured homes from the site.
So this is in my area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My district.
That's right. It's right across from Fred's beds.
Their site's been cleaned up though.
It does. It's been real cleaned up.
There are about 83 uses permitted by right in the general business zoning district that include land uses under the retail trade, real estate, and rental and leasing, professional, scientific, technical, and education services. There are around 18 uses permitted with a special use permit. Those include land uses under the utilities, manufacturing, arts, entertainment, and recreational land use categories. And the table on the right outlines the setbacks for the general business zoning district. Although there is no proposed development associated with this application, based on the available volume to capacity data, this segment of US Highway 17 does have the capacity to accommodate any increases in traffic at this time.
Well, not any. Some increase.
Some, sure. That's a good point, sure. Maybe an increase in traffic.
Yes.
But a traffic impact analysis is not required for general use rezoning purposes, right?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
It is just 2.2 acres, right?
That's right. Yes, sir. Both tracks together make up about 2.2 acres. And the subject properties are located within the neighborhood mixed use future land use category, as shown on the future land use map here. And the neighborhood mixed use future land use classification allows for really a transition between a more intense office and commercial development to the lower density residential neighborhoods. In addition to the future land use map, the proposed zoning map amendment was found to be consistent with three policies within Pender 2.0, and therefore, staff respectfully recommends approval of the proposed zoning map amendment, as detailed in this presentation and within the board's packets. And the Pender County Planning Board voted unanimously at their April 5 meeting to recommend approval of the zoning map amendment, finding the proposal consistent with Pender 2.0, along with stating that any commercial development on the property could be an improvement to the surrounding community.
But for no specified purposes other than any purposes by right for general business. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. We do have the applicant with us this evening, and he's able to answer any questions the board may have for him, as well as staff.
Does the board have any questions for staff or the applicant?
No, sir, if I'm good.
I've already asked him.
I can't make a motion or a second. I would make a motion for this.
Motion, brutal.
Are we not going to hear from the applicant?
Unless...
Do you want to?
Not necessarily unless they want to talk.
No, I... As I said, I would make a motion to move forward with this and approve it, but I can't do that as chairman, so at this time...
Motion for approval.
Well, we got to close the public hearing first.
Oh, we got to close the public hearing, which I did.
That's why I asked, where's it going to hear from?
At this time, we'll consider a motion.
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Do we not have to have criteria determined for a rezoning?
Well, I mean, the criteria set forth, but you don't have to state them on any consistency. Well, the consistency statements still need to be there, but it was presented as it was consistent, so that's presumably included in the original motion. But it's for special use permits that you have to specify it fails number three, or it, you know, it's inconsistent with the community or creates a hazard or...
So again, all those in favor? It passes unanimously.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
No, 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 no.
Oh, we can adjourn. So hold, hold, hold.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we got to continue this meeting until Thursday because we have an open item that was not...
The resolution that would be...
Right. It was still in draft format. We're going to continue this meeting, so I'd like to consider a motion to continue this meeting to next Thursday or this Thursday, May 19th at 4:00 p.m.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? We are continuing till Thursday.
Before everybody leaves, I will be calling you individually. I had something for a closed session. We didn't have time to get to it. I'm not dumb enough to ask you to stick around for it. I will call you a couple of... I've already...